This meeting is called to order. All right. I am Mayor Beverly H. Burks and this is the April Work Session for 2024, April 30th. At this time, I will do roll call. Vice Mayor Johnson is excused this evening. Councilwoman Bell is online. You want to say if you're present or not?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Carroll.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood. And Councilman Perkins.
Present.
There are any changes to the agenda and I'm trying to figure out what. Okay, thank you. You got the feedback? Okay, thank you. No changes to the agenda, so the agenda is approved under common consent. Now we'll move to public comments. Any member of the public may address questions or comments to the City Council, referencing only agenda items after the council. Mayor and council have had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments. And this time, we will have a presentation by the Clarkston Development Foundation, CDF, about the Early Learning Task Force and Tell Me a Story programs. And that will be done by Roberta Malavenda. And please come up. You can clap for it if you want to. This is one, this is the hardest, only hardest and only task force that is working in the city. And they are making major improvements. And City Manager, how much time did we allot for that?
We allotted 10 minutes for her presentation and questions at the end.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Roberta, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council and our City Manager. I'm really glad to be here and thank you for this opportunity. My role is as Executive Director of CDF Action. And I also have the pleasure of serving as a facilitator for the Clarkston Early Learning Task Force, which is what we would like to share with you this evening. The Clarkston Early Learning Task Force has been in existence about two, three years. And we really value this opportunity to share with you what we've been doing and what our proposals are. Next slide, please. We'll talk to you a little bit about why early learning and why cities should be involved in early learning. We have a lot of babies in Clarkston. We have a lot of young people. We have one of the highest percentages of children zero to five really in the state. And we know that those children will grow into citizens and hopefully be productive in our city and in our state. We want the council and our community to think babies, to think toddlers, to think preschoolers. We're about zero to five. And this is an age that most people know we have in our city, but we don't see them. We don't see their parents because they're too busy raising children. And so we become pretty much a spokesperson for early learning in Clarkston and the surrounding area. Why early learning? We know that it's important for children's social, emotional, and cognitive growth. You know about the brain research and that learning starts early. We know that active participation in early learning prepares them for school. Through early learning, parents have a social network. Multilingual learning is really important. And most important, in the city of Clarkston, childcare allows parents to go to work. We have, you know, restaurants and gas stations and all kinds of services where we need employees. And childcare is important around the country in order to put our families back in the workplace. Next slide. This map will be familiar to you. We do the majority of our work in Clarkston, Georgia for the last three years. And we see ourselves as childcare champions of Clarkston. Next slide. What I'd like to do in the next couple of minutes is talk to you about four things. A little bit about CDF Action, my organization. The history and background and purpose of the Clarkston Early Learning Task Force. A little bit about our impact. And then some next steps and what we need to do from here on in to continue to work on the task force issues. Next slide. So first, I'm going to tell you a little bit about CDF Action. Next slide. We've been around since 2010. Our focus is on parents and babies and toddlers with children zero to five. We have a really strong mission statement that really focuses on collaboration with residents and partners. We listen and we develop our programs and our policies and our actions based on what we hear from residents. Our mission is that we focus on transforming policies, programs, and places to be equitable for all children and their families. So we'd like to think that early learning happens everywhere. And so we're really excited about providing and engaging families in Clarkston. Next slide. I'm going to go through these pretty quickly because you could read them later, hopefully. We just wanted to share with you our strategic framework that pretty much mirrors the mission statement that I talked about. So we do nothing without resident engagement and listen. And we use an approach called the Asset-Based Community Development Approach. We do everything through partnerships. We're very small. We have a staff of about three and consultants and lots of partners. So we're a catalyst. We're like a background, a back, background organization. We leverage funds and we collaborate. And that's why we get to do so much and we have much to tell you. The other thing that we're really proud of is that we look to innovate and lead and we look for new and innovative ideas. We do have a logic model, Mark, and we do have evaluations. And we've been very willing to share those with the council at later, later times. So we're not going to go through all of the CDF Action programs. The next slide, please. But if you're more interested in knowing some of our programs, including our ready school, please visit our website. Next slide. So now I'd like to tell you a little bit about the Early Learning Task Force, the background and overview. Next slide. There are a couple of ways that we've talked about the task force over the past couple of years. Its purpose is to engage the Clarkston community to develop equitable policies, practices, and programs so that every young child enjoys safe nurturing and playful learning environments. You'll see joy and playful a lot in our presentation and in the work that we do because we believe children learn a lot through play. And one of the things that the task force has done is research, discuss, and collaborate and bring extra money into Clarkston for a lot of our early learning services. Next slide. I wanted to tell you a little bit about the history. And you can, you can read about it. But we really came out of the Clarkston, our CDF Actions Dialogue, where we brought residents around the county, the city together to talk about needs. And a group came together to say that we want to support the library and we want to increase literacy in Clarkston. And we formed the Clarkston Early Learning Network, which did a couple of things. One with Jamie Carroll to really change zoning, the zoning ordinance in Clarkston to allow for ready schools, after-school, and tutoring. It's been somewhat problematic because of the fire marshal issues. But we have done some things around that zoning ordinance and we're really proud of that. And we have some people in homes in Clarkston that are interested in family childcare. So watch for that in the future. It's, it will go to good use. And we did some other things, including starting the Clarkston Tell Me a Story, which I'll tell you a little bit about later. But in 2019, we approached the City Council and asked to be an advisory committee. And in, actually, it was 2019, going back over my notes, that the city did pass a resolution to create the task force and appointed 20 members. Next slide. Here's just a little bit of the initial resolution. So you don't have to go looking for it when you hopefully try to do your new one. This is a little bit of it, but the whole resolution is in your packet. And you can see what the purpose was. It's appointed by the City Council. The initial resolution was for 11 members. We had 20 people apply and we went back to the council and they said, "Okay, you've got 20 people, appoint all of them." So we went up to 20 people and there was a lot of interest in the council at that time. Next slide. It's a quick picture of some of our members and some of the names of the people that have joined us. We have parents, we have residents of Clarkston. We have a mix of refugees and immigrants. We have City Council people. The City Manager is an ex-official member of the group. We have two City Council members who are a member of the group. And the majority of the people that you see on that list, when I polled them about three or four weeks ago, are still willing to continue if it's the council's wish to continue this task force. So I've already done the polling. I already have the names ready, should you decide to reappoint us. Next slide, please. In this slide, I basically talk about some of the activities that we did. Again, we are a collaborative. So a lot of our things are, we're not going to tell you how many people exactly and have that kind of demographics. One of the things we're really proud about is that we were able to change the Department of Early Care and Learning policies to accept the I-94 document in lieu of a birth certificate to allow people to apply for the CAPS, which is the Childcare Subsidy Program. We did this for the state and we're really excited about that. And I'm going to take a little bit more long, longer than 10 minutes, maybe 12 if you give it to me. History. We, next slide, please. We have a lot of activities. Clarkston Tell Me a Story, the Story Walk of Friendship Forest, and others. Next slide. Clarkston Tell Me a Story is probably our signature project that's funded by the city. And here are some data from that event that I won't repeat. You can look at it. 10 committee members, 30 literacy partners, 26 sponsors, 10 storytellers, and lots of volunteers and lots of families that attend every year. Next slide. Clarkston Story Walk is in Friendship Forest. This came about during the, during COVID when families wanted a place to go. And we included literacy books and we're really excited about that. We had a big event March 30th. We had 31 people attend and I included the data from that event in my quarterly report. Next slide. Story Walk, more information. Next slide. Here's some other activities where we have gotten involved in the city of Clarkston activities. Next slide. We're really pleased to participate in the Tots Town Hall, which you will hear more about. Next slide. The Clarkston Early Learning Fair was, this will be our third year to showcase Clarkston Early Learning Childcare Centers. Next slide. Here's some data about the first, second, and the third year is being planned even as we speak. We'll have more data for you in the future. Next slide. We had a Decal and Partners Early Learning Dialogue with 60 case managers. And we're going to do another one this year with City Council funding. Next slide. We have had a lot of impact from the Early Learning Dialogue. Next slide. One of the programs that we're really excited about is Childcare Navigation, which came about through navigation, through conversations with case managers who are helping families who speak a language other than English access childcare. And we're collecting data on the number of families we've actually served. I say "we," IRC and Refugee Family Literacy Program. Next slide. Upcoming, we'll have an Early Learning Fair. We will have the Decal and Partners Early Care and Learning Dialogue again. Clarkston Tell Me a Story is September 14th at Clarkston Community Center. And we'll continue with Childcare Navigation. Next slide. Here's the date, save the date.
Okay.
Next slide, and I'm done.
Okay.
Next steps, we do ask the City Council to consider a resolution to continue the task force, change it to a committee, and appoint new members. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. We appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing. Give them a round of applause. And again, as part of that recommendation, is it that you are a committee versus a task force? Okay, all right. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Well, thank you again for all the hard work that you're doing for our children. If you know the data for Clarkston, 34% of our population is under the age of 18. And so it is great that we are making sure that our zero to five have a wonderful head start. And thanks to all the hard work that you are doing for our kids. We will now proceed with the old business. And that is Item 5A, which is to discuss in ordinance amending Chapter 3. And I ask that everyone make sure that you turn your phones to silent or vibrate at this time. I know we got, you know, people can't let us stay two hours anywhere. So just make sure we have it silent, vibrate. Thank you. To discuss an ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the code regarding alcoholic beverages to allow late-night sales for consumption on the premises, subject to certain conditions. And this was originally brought to us by former Councilman Wet Yassu, who's in the audience today. And we asked that the city staff provide us some additional information. And so at this time, I'll turn it over to the City Manager. And then if we need to follow up with the attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As the mayor mentioned, this particular item is on the agenda because it was initially discussed about two months ago. And the staff, we were asked to do some research and provide some information to you about what some other cities are doing. As the mayor mentioned, we did submit that information to she and the council. And Mayor, I don't know if you want me to go through that information, but essentially, we did research on what some of our area cities are doing in regard to, in regards to extended hours. And we looked at the city of like Dunwoody, we looked at Decatur, Doraville. And you want me to go through what those hours are?
Yeah, if you, if I can get concurrence from the council that from our discussion, we won't exceed more than 20 minutes for this particular item from in terms of our discussion. Okay, okay. All right, proceed.
Okay, all right. Okay, let me pull it up here. So particularly for the city of Avondale Estates, they have a 2:00 AM closing Monday through Saturday. They're open from 8:00 AM to 11:55 PM. And on Sundays, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The city of Decatur does have two establishments by choice and by charter. And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, so jump in if I'm wrong on that. But they close at 2:00 AM, but they have the choice to stay open till 4:00 AM in the morning. But typically, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 3:55 AM. Saturday, 2:00 AM to 2:55 AM. And then Sunday is 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And also, the city of Stone Mountain has also a 2:00 AM closing Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. Saturdays, 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM. And then Sundays, 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM. And then, of course, we also looked at the city of Doraville, 2:00 AM closing Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. Sunday is 11:00 AM until 2:00 AM. And then Dunwoody also has a 2:00 AM closing. They do have establishments that close at 4:00 AM. And those are by choice, based upon their code. And, and Decatur, I'm sorry, Decatur. Dunwoody is based upon their classification and definitions of what a establishment is. And those are from Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And Sunday is 11:00 AM until 2:00 AM. I did want to also share, and this is where our city attorney may want to jump in. There was also a conversation, Mayor, about loud, noisy cars. That was also discussed at the last meeting. And our city attorney shared with me the state law, state law, OCG, Section 40-6-14 that prohibits noisy cars, whether the sound is from the muffler or the stereo. This law does require noise meters to enforce. It's simply prohibit, well, it does not require noise meters to enforce. It simply prohibits cars from making noise that are audible from 100 feet away. And this is something that the city, we can enforce this particular state law. And I would like for our city attorney to also share information from his experience on the decibel meters.
Sure, thanks. So in my experience, the decibel meters are problematic. They are expensive. You have to calibrate them regularly for them to be admissible in court, which is an ongoing expense. They are difficult to use correctly. You know, you can train someone in doing it and they still might not be very good at it. It's just, I mean, it's a scientific instrument. Another big weakness that those instruments have is that they have no ability to discern the source of a sound or to distinguish a particular sound from the ambient noise. And so it all just gets added together. My recommendation would be to not amend the code to require those.
Okay. And thank you both for your input. And just for clarity, when it comes to this particular ordinance that we're talking about, it's specifically just for the hours. It has nothing to do with the additional information. But that was just for points of reference that everyone had and wanted to have additional information. I will now open it up to the council at this time. If they have any questions or would like to provide an additional feedback about this. Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, relative to Decatur's operating hours, they have a choice to stay open till 4:00 AM. Chief, do you know if that requires them to do additional conditions?
Good evening. No, ma'am, I don't. I spoke to Chief Richards the other day in reference to this. He said they only have two places that stay open till 4:00 AM. They can stay open, but they've only got two that, that want to stay open until 4:00 AM.
So basically, their hours, their permitted hours in Decatur would be until 4:00 AM.
Yes, ma'am, 3:55 AM.
Two choose to stay to 4:00. The others who could stay don't. And they just close at 2:00. All right.
Thank you.
And before you go, Chief, to that point, are those places designated as restaurants? Or are they, do they have a different designation? Or are they, do they have a different designation?
Decatur only, I'm sorry to jump in, I just know this. Decatur, like the city of Clarkston, does not allow bars. They only allow restaurants. So everywhere, there's a restaurant.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Okay, counsel, any other questions at this time? Yes, Councilwoman Carroll?
I know this is not part of the ordinance that we're discussing today, but we brought up the noise. I understand noise decibels are not accurate. They can't tell like the source of the noise. But I know we discussed earlier potentially doing noise cameras, which could tell the source, the source of the noise, and at least identify whether the noise is coming from the car, or, for example, from a restaurant. I mean, is that an option to enforce?
I don't know their capabilities, but I assume you're right about that. Currently, the reading from a unmanned camera or instrument is not allowed under Georgia law to facilitate a citation. But there is a, I don't know whether this bill passed or not. The last time I looked at this was during the legislative session, and there was a bill that had been dropped and was under consideration to do a pilot program to allow exactly what you ask about. And they were going to choose at Georgia City and let them install the cameras and basically give out twenty-five-dollar civil citations. I don't know whether that passed. I can go back and check. But even if it did pass, it was only for one city that was going to be selected by the governor. So I can say confidently that we would not be allowed to do that as the state law stands.
Right. Because I know we couldn't give out tickets, but I wonder if it would at least give us information.
Yeah.
As to where the noise is coming from. So, you know, that could, you know, inform other enforcement decisions.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, that would be a question to the people offering these machines, what are their capabilities? But if we were thinking of it for informational purposes, then there's no reason we couldn't do that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, counsel, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you, Mayor Burks. The question I have is related to the discussion at hand in regards to late-night ordinance, or extension for the business. And I guess this question is for Chief. Can you tell us of any recent incident or issues with businesses that have been providing extension, or that quite frankly, provide, had late-night hours that were also abiding by the ordinance? Because I think that is what we're trying to make a decision in regards to today. Oh, well, discussion for today.
Can you shorten that just a little bit, Councilwoman Bell? I couldn't hear.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Recent incidents of businesses that have had extended hours based off this ordinance that have been complying, as the ordinance is written currently? Any incident, Chief, recent?
Any incidents recently from staying open?
Correct. Correct.
Well, we haven't had, I mean, they've all been closing at two, so are we going back to when we had the late-night hours till four?
I think, and Councilwoman Bell, you're just making sure that, has there been any type of issues, whether it's something related with cars, or anything else with the current establishments, or anything in terms of security, or anything else related to that?
No, ma'am. As of right now.
As of right now?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Can I pose another question, Mayor Burks?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Chief, while you're still up there, do you know, based off of your notation and your officer input, when was the last time when there were extended hours till 4:00 AM that we had an incident?
I don't have that right in front of me. Councilwoman Bell, I could check that and get back to you on that.
Okay, I'll wait. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I think she wants you to let her know in terms of making that decision.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Perkins.
So I just want to make sure I'm fully clear on what we're trying to do. Because I think the original idea was, we would, you know, sounded like there was folks on both sides of this issue during public comment last time around. And we all, I think, came to a consensus that, you know, a decision like this would impact, you know, needed to be made with an area in mind, or more than just specific establishments in mind. And in light of that, we wanted to look at, well, let's look at, what does this law look like in other municipalities, other areas? Are people doing it? If they're doing it, how is it going? And if it's going well, what other criteria are true of these other municipalities? And do we fit those criteria? Is it something we can do well? And so, that was my original understanding. I think sound may have been a component of it, but I just want to make sure I'm tracking with everybody on that. And so, if that's what we're trying to do, I guess my question is, where do we see this going? Personally, I think we still need a little more information on that. I think this is a really great start in terms of looking at, hey, do late-night ordinance exist? I think we still need some comparative data on when we did have our late-night ordinance, not what's going on now, but what was going on then? And was it any different? And what's the nature of that? Whether it's, you know, I think there's a compliance component of that. There's a, you know, just in terms of alcohol sales and food, there's a, you know, obviously a law enforcement, you know, safety component. Is it creating other issues in surrounding properties associated with the operation of existing businesses? And again, that gives us information to look at our surrounding area and say, hey, you know, based on what's already happening, can we legislate this in a way that makes it work? And if we can't, you know, where do we go from here?
Yes.
So, it's more, a little bit of a question comment, but that's my understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. And so, I guess my next step would be, do we have the information we need to have a robust conversation around that? Or do we need more information in order to be able to move forward?
Thank you, Councilman Perkins. I know that part of this was to also do an audit as well. And interim city manager, I don't think the staff has had an opportunity to complete that audit. Is that true?
That is, that is true. We have not completed that audit. Our finance team is working on it.
Okay. And so, that was part of what you were saying, Councilman Perkins. For what is on the agenda tonight is specifically whether we go back, go to the four hour, four PM hour, three fifty-nine. But to your point, and what we've all kind of said, is that we're making sure that we look at this holistically, not just the hours, but also the complacency piece, making sure some of the other components that go along with having these restaurants, particularly restaurants that have alcohol licenses, where are we with that? And so, from a staffing perspective, I know that previously, they were able to do an audit that also helped the council do some analysis. And so, we're still waiting for them to process the data, because I know they have a lot going on right about now. So that component has not been completed. And so, if that's a decision with the council in terms of whether or not we move this tonight, or allow the staff to have more opportunity, that is also the pleasure, just because it is on the agenda. And part of what we did was that we made a motion to have this on the agenda after sixty days. And so, based on that sixty-day marker, the staff has not been able to properly provide that information in terms of the additional components to it. They were able to get, you know, the hours, and looking at the noise, and other pieces to it. But from that comprehensive holistic perspective, there are some pieces that would be beneficial for the discussion that we would like to make sure in terms of this decision. Is that something from a council perspective? Am I getting concurrence about that? Or yes?
The one thing I was interested in is both the question that Councilwoman Bell raised about what the incidents were, when it's previously 4:00 AM. I'd also be interested to hear what Decatur and Dunwoody's experience has been with the 4:00 AM time, if they've had issues, if they haven't had issues. That may just be, that may be something we can determine in next week. That may be just a quick call to their police department, being like, has this been an issue for their experience?
Okay. Great. And counsel?
May I jump on to?
Oh, I'm gonna let Councilwoman Bell do it, and then I'll let you jump.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you. So I agree with the sentiments of my colleagues thus far. I think that the item at hand, though, is in regards to late-night hours, and economic development, and businesses that we already have and exist, and the impact it's going to have on the community as a whole. I do think, though, and I brought this up the last time we discussed this, that we do need to think outside of the scope of the business that we have, and the future of the city, to kind of have a comprehensive overview of what this may look like, or what we need to shift, overlay districts, and et cetera. And I do think the analysis would help, but I think at this point, we're talking about impact. And we're talking about impact from two ways, on the community, as well as our staff, but also the businesses. And I think that that's where, that's where I'm thinking about it, as far as the focus of this particular item is concerned.
Okay, thank you. And I'll let Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I agree with that. I think, you know, we've got to look at it again, as I said, as a whole. If I can make a suggestion, I'm wondering if it would be helpful, you know, one, I think for us to maybe come, bullet point our questions that we would like answered, just to make sure it's really clear for all of our staff to know, hey, what am I looking for? What, you know, what do I need to be in order to answer this? What does answering this question mean? So my suggestion would be, we take a little time to maybe workshop some of that, you know? Or we could do that at the council meeting and say, if we're going to come up with a list of questions, clearly vote on it, and sort of, here's our next step. And then, once we come up with that list, I'd be interested in hearing our interim city manager's opinion on how long she feels to be realistic to answer those questions as well. So how does everybody feel about that?
Counsel?
Just to make sure you're not kind of getting peppered with all sorts of different random things, but it's really clear, hey, here's what we feel like is, if we cover these things, we'll be able to make a decision off of it, and there's not an extra thing that comes up, you know, last minute for you.
That would be very helpful for us.
Okay. And I think that would be beneficial in the other piece to it, just so, from even a compromise perspective, you know, if that is something that the council wants, because I know it's a divided issue, you know, let's just be honest about it, right? You know, you have a lot of people who just don't want to increase the hours. You have people who do. And so, ultimately, we have to make a decision, and part of that decision could be even a compromise on that time. And so, that's another option for us to think about as well. So, you know, putting all of that out, making sure that we think about that, coming up with a list of questions and points that you suggested, I think that's also beneficial as well. So, Councilwoman Hood, any other comments? Okay. Any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Bell?
Oh, sorry. Do we want to do that now, or say we'll do that at the council meeting, or with your preference?
Whatever we want to do. It's the pleasure. But we got fifty-seven seconds.
I think we better draw it up afterward. Fifty-seven seconds is kind of short.
Mm-hmm.
May I make one final comment?
Yes, sir.
In the nature of this, I did want to address the public. I appreciate the feedback. I've gotten some emails from you all, I think we all have. And I value those. I do, I do read those, try to respond promptly, as often as I'm able. But I do want to assure you, we aren't taking this seriously from both directions. I think, you know, as someone who may not stay up to 4:00 AM, who has kids, and frequent a late-night establishment, it's a check, you know, I'll speak for myself, but it's a check for my own biases to ask questions about legislation that I might not be the first person to put forward, right? And I think I can speak for my colleagues as well. We have a lot of diverse perspectives and opinions on this issue. And so, what we're trying to do is, we understand the consequences, positive or negative, of the decisions that we make. And so, while we may not jump in on every single thread on social media, it is something we are taking very seriously. So I hope, I just want you to hear that. I don't want to say that out loud to you all. I appreciate the, you know, the discussion, and look forward to hearing your comments on this as well. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
And with that, we will move into comments. So, who do we have signed up? City clerk?
First, we have.
Yes. Debbie Gathman. All right, Ms. Gathman.
Hi, I'm Debbie Gathman. I live on Mel Avenue. I want to talk about this particular thing, and I'm giving myself three minutes. Do we, first, do we as a city have the capacity for this? The lounge can't be the only one in the future. I mean, what are we going to do? Are we going to have ten of them? Are we going to have four of them? Are we going to have seven of them? What does the future look like? I really resonate with what Councilwoman Bell said about the future. That's a big issue for me. I feel like we allowed gas stations and convenience stores to be open twenty-four hours, and one of the arguments for this was that we couldn't stop them being robbed, because we didn't have the capacity. But now, we're going to say that liquor can be sold up to 4:00 AM, and we clearly don't have the capacity to manage that. The lounge does not have a working kitchen on site, so they're already outside the rules. Third, why doesn't Tucker, Stone Mountain, Lilburn, Shambly, and Avondale have lounges that don't have a kitchen, open, selling drinks until 4:00 AM? I called some of those, because I don't fool around, and three of them told me, we don't have the capacity to manage that. And one of them was Tucker, which is a city with a bazillion dollars, and the help of DeKalb County. And they have never had the capacity to do that. They think it's a big mistake, but they were happy that Clarkson was willing to do it. They were going to send their people over. So, they thought that was pretty funny. They said they don't have the bandwidth to manage, making sure that they're doing the fifty percent restaurant rule, and that they're closing when there's, or that they're stopping the drinking. My understanding is that the Decatur of those two sites that are open till 4:00 AM, one of them stopped serving alcohol at two, but continues to serve food. We can't say that this place continues to serve food, because they don't have a kitchen. Number four, I heard one argument was that jobs and rent payments were at risk, and I feel that that is, as kindly as I can say it, due to a bad business model. If you're a restaurant and you don't have a working kitchen, then increasing your hours, your hours could be twenty-four hours a day, you're not going to make enough to pay rent and to keep all those jobs going. I question the business model. I'm not sure that increasing the hours is actually going to make them suddenly in the black, if they haven't been up to now. I really support small businesses. I ran one for twenty-eight years, and much of that time was in Tucker, and I know how hard it is to stay in the black. But I have to question the business model, and I have to wonder whether the small, they could not use some help from Small Business Administration to figure that out. Because it doesn't appear that even with the two extra hours, if they're only selling liquor, I don't know how they're going to make money. Bye.
Thank you.
That was my three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Who do we have next?
Is it Mitchell Marques?
Mr. Marques.
Marques, yes.
All right, thank you. I'll try to stick to my three minutes. So to echo what's just been said, I think the, one, my biggest concern is, again, the future and being able to enforce rules. I like to support local businesses, that play by the rules. The problem I have with this whole thing is, I don't know why we're talking about it still, because it's really been pushed to benefit exactly one business, and that business is not playing by the rules. And that also brings a question about how we're doing the audit, how we're verifying that the businesses are complying with the code. Because, you know, I did some very quick search, nothing terribly fancy, I'm not a detective or anything, and I found that their food business is through delivery services. And if you actually go pick it up instead of have it delivered, it's an address in Atlanta. So it's what's called a ghost kitchen. Now, if this is a condition for alcohol sales on premises as part of a legitimate restaurant, I would expect the food sales would also be for consumption on premises. Or at the very least, the kitchen would be on premises, but that's not what's happening in here. The, again, so the biggest thing for me is compliance, there was talk about, well, you know, if, has there been any issues from the business? I think we need, we need to be a little careful there, because I think you have to look at, well, sure, maybe there wasn't noise directly coming from the business or anything like that, but what about things that have been happening? anything like that, but what about things that have been happening because the business is there? I'll give you an example. Not that long ago, I had to call the police at 1:00 AM because there was a party going on at the Texaco. And I can tell you that because that's, that's where the, the parking is for the PSL, that was either the pre-party or post-party or co-party, uh, of the PSL. Okay, so, and that has only happened as a result of the late hours. Okay, now, sure, it's only happened once in a while now with the 2:00 AM, but I, I don't want to think what it would be like, um, if we go back to 4:00 AM. Okay? Wow, I'm ahead of time. Amazing. That never happens. So I, I really want to, to make sure we, we address compliance and, you know, if the conditions for a liquor license are outlined and we're not verifying and, and just letting things go by, was to keep another, someone else to open, to, for opening a bar using the same model? And that's what we have to look at in the future. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marques. Who do we have next?
I think it's, it's Jimmy.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Jimmy. If you have to bring the stroller. Or if you have to hold him.
Good evening, uh, city council members, the mayor and the city staffs. Uh, my name is Tess Fermeere-Moguay from, uh, Pot Sport Lounge. Uh, this, uh, hour being cut almost two, three years from, uh, 2021 August 1st till now. I provided with, uh, month-to-month numbers and, uh, yearly numbers and all the time that we work in until this quarter of, uh, 2024. And, uh, because, because of that, uh, time taken, our business is going down because of Clarkston is, we are foreigners, we came in here 20 years ago, we opened this establishment. Most of the people that I know or people that live in this area is our, uh, refugee people and they work late night, most of them. So they, they get out, by the time we close, closing time comes, they get out from work and they come to the cities to eat, to have a couple of drinks and to enjoy the night. So because of the hours taken, we cannot accommodate those people. They gone out from the cities and they spent their money some other places and then we don't have that much, uh, uh, customers that to support this kind of establishment or this kind of places in our city. We don't get that many business daytime to support, uh, to just make it support. I can't just cook and provide without no employees there, just like anybody's, like what they, what they doing in Clarkston. But to have a kitchen staff, to have employees, to have full, full people there to operate this business, we had to have more time to get more people. And our kitchen is certified, checked by the, the DeKalb County House Department and we have, uh, full kitchen staff and working there day and night to providing food for people that want it. So you can come anytime, walk in there and see for yourself. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Who do we have next?
Steve Moore, former Councilman Moore.
Thank you. I'm Dean Moore, Braver Trail. I'm sorry to see you considering this again. I think we learned by our mistakes last time by allowing this. Um, this is for the benefit of one or two businesses and I think that I'd prefer to see the council concentrating on things like early learning network, um, development of skills and, uh, worker, uh, improvement than to be focusing on late night drinking. Uh, many times I have to come back into the city from jobs that I'm working late at night building restaurants or other projects I'm on. And I've seen a lot of wrecks and devastation throughout the city, broken furniture, fences, guardrails, things like that, when we had our higher, uh, consumption of alcohol here. And, uh, I made a statement back the last time about how it could be devastating to families. One of our most famous statesmen that was here, uh, made the remark that, yeah, like kids are going to be driving around in cars that late at night. Well, no, but sometimes parents are, um, grandparents are, uh, great-grandparents are, which I am all of those. And, um, if something happens to me, my family's going to be devastated. And, uh, so that's, that's why I object to this increase of, uh, alcohol use in Alexia City, focus on early learning networks and, uh, school boards and things like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Who do we have next?
We don't have any more, Mayor.
Okay, and I will allow, if anybody else wants, uh, former Councilman Yasu.
Good evening. My name is Awal Yasu. Great to see everybody. First of all, I want to thank our staff for the research that they did. It's, uh, pretty good to know that actually Decatur already does have two existing establishments with similar hours, uh, closing at 4:00 AM. And, um, uh, they don't even have any restrictions, they don't even have, they don't even require them to have off-duty police officer. And I already also know in Clarkston, even though it's a different classification, we have an adult entertainment place that actually stays open until 4:00 AM. Having said that, I also want to thank Councilmember Perkins for making that statement. I see a lot of kind of, um, statements on social media that sounds to be pretty skewed towards, um, a one-sided view and the other view is not seen. A lot of the other view is not on social media. But it's a lot of us, we are also in the community, even though we are not writing on social media, we live here. A lot of our community members work late. And they definitely want to have a place that they can go to, have a couple of drinks or eat or, um, have some fun. And that's not just immigrants only, by the way. It also includes so many of African-American community members right here in Clarkston who DJ at the same establishment, who come frequent the place. So we also want our community, our youth to stay within the city. And so that if they don't, if you don't want them to drive and go everywhere, let's give them, provide them with a place they can walk into and have fun and they can walk home. And last but not least, I want to say, uh, there's two things that probably might help make it better by, uh, making sure that we don't have a mushrooming of establishments by giving them a window of opportunity to apply for that once it's done. The second thing is put safeguards for, uh, people who are concerned about noise, put some safeguards by placing sanctions if anything happens like that. Let's make sure that there are something placed in there so that if a, an establishment is not following and abiding by the rules, that they don't get that kind of, um, um, that kind of license. That's all I want to say, but please let us be mindful that business owners, they're feeding their family members by doing that business. It doesn't matter how moral it is, how much, uh, immoral it is in our perception, but they do provide food for their children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. With that, um, did we have anyone online? Okay. With that, we will close this item. It's definitely not a consent item, so we can have additional conversations about this next steps next week. I said it's not. It's not. Okay. Thank you all and thank you for community for coming out. Did you, did you have some more? Okay. Yes, okay.
S- sorry about this. I did go back and, um, I think I emailed, I know that you guys received an email a while back in reference to incidences that had happened back when they were open till 4:00 AM. So you have that. There was an incident that happened on March the 20th of 2024. It was, um, at approximately 2350 hours. There was, um, two cars that pulled into Pot Sports Lounge, tried to break into a car that was parked at Pot Sports Lounge. Security guard came out as the guys were getting into their vehicle to leave after breaking into a car. The security guard started shooting at the guys, at the, at the cars. They traveled down to Pecan Street, turned around, came back and it was a big shootout. We recovered 23 shell casings. So that was on, like again, on March the 20th.
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you for that update and, and thank you for sending all of that additional information to us. Okay, counsel, we'll move on to item 5B, which is to discuss an ordinance to amend the city charter to authorize the city manager to purchase certain goods and services and to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city, interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, the city manager position has zero, uh, spending authority or contracting authority. Um, our city charter says that the council approves and the mayor signs contracts. The proposed ordinance would amend the city charter to allow the city council to enact an ordinance to allow the city manager to enter into contracts on the city's behalf. Um, the details and limits on this authority are, uh, within the proposed ordinance, uh, that will amend the city code. The ordinance to amend the city charter will need to be adopted at two consecutive regular meetings to become effective. And that proposed amount is, uh, a spending authority of $25,000.
Thank you, city manager. And just for clarity, this has been on the agenda. However, uh, we made some changes which required us to go back through the process of having it, it to sequential council meetings. So at this time, are there any updates or questions about it? If we make any updates or to this document, then we start back at ground zero. And so, and that's fine, I'm just making sure you're aware of that. Yes?
And so this is considered, next week's council meeting will be considered the first...
Right, it will be considered the first of the two.
Thank you.
Okay. There any more discussion on that? And just again, for the, uh, audience and for the residents, this was on the agenda. We made some changes to it and therefore we have to make sure we go through the proper process of two sequential meetings. Counsel? Yes, Councilman, um, Carol and then Councilman Perkins.
I would just ask that it be consent. We've already discussed this pretty extensively unless someone has any objection to it.
He said consent. He would like for it to be consent.
Sure.
Okay. Councilwoman Bell? I want to make sure you're, okay?
I have no objection to that.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, did we have anyone signed up for this particular item?
Mr. Dean Moore.
All right, Mr. Moore. He's gone. Gone once, gone twice. Gone. Is he here? Okay, well, let Ms... Yeah, yes, let him know. I, I don't want him not to have his voice heard. Oh, he signed up? Oh. Okay, okay. No ma'am, okay, all right. With that, um, no one else signed up. This will be on consent, but see next to item, um, 5B. Now we'll move on to item 5C, which is to discuss an ordinance to amend the chapter two of the city code regarding administration to delegate to the city manager the authority to purchase goods and services and to enter into contracts on behalf of the city, subject to certain conditions and limitations. Interim city manager Jones.
Uh, the proposed ordinance would allow the city manager to make purchases and enter into contracts in an amount not to exceed $25,000. The ordinance provides several checks and balances for fiscal responsibility and public transparency. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Thank you, city manager. And again, this was another item. We just wanted to make sure in terms of clarity for this particular item, um, to our attorneys, is there anything else that we need to be mindful of this when it comes to this particular item?
No, not necessarily. If you, if you feel like, uh, you're familiar with it, I know we discussed this at the last work session. Um, I would just add that this ordinance cannot take effect until the charter amendment is approved. So if it were adopted next week, it really wouldn't be effective then. It would be effective after a month after the charter amendments were made.
Right. And so to that point, if we have this on consent, then we can specify that the effective date would need to be at the next month's meeting.
And I can add that to the document for, so it's clear. I hadn't thought about that before right now.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any discussion on this item as well? Yes, Councilman Carol?
I just agree it should be consent with an effective date of the next month.
Okay. Is that, is that the pleasure of the body? Yes, sir. Consent agenda. No? You have questions? Okay.
Yes. On item D, it's, uh, it says, "An unconditional order of goods shall not be considered a contract under this subsection." What, uh, Mr. Quinn, what is that?
For example, if the city needs 100 pencils, then, you know, you can call Office Max and say, "I need 100 pencils." And that's not, that's a, a purchase, but it's not a contract. I mean, it could, it, it could be considered a contract legally, um, but the idea was that that's not beneficial to go through a reporting process, um, when the city is just purchasing goods.
How about if those goods cost $15,000? Is that, do we need to put some sort of limit on, on this? Financial limit? It just seems like the, the door is wide open.
I think this is just from a legal perspective. Like if they send an order in for pencils, there's no real legal advice Stephen can give.
Oh, right. That's what D is. I'm sorry, thank you. The, the, the point of D overall is that the city attorney has to review the contract. So, and that's to make sure that its terms are clear and not disadvantageous to the city. But what I wanted to avoid is an ordinance that would require the city manager to have the city attorney review all the purchases, which are unconditional, and that's like the example that I gave. So you would, the city manager is still limited, um, in all the ways other than getting the city attorney's approval of the contract, which would, I don't even know what I would be approving. I mean...
There's nothing to review. You're wasting legal bill.
Right.
Go ahead.
There's no, there's no financial limitation on this, so it could, so it could be a purchase that's very expensive.
It could.
But it's not a contract. Is that an issue?
Right. I, I mean, it's not for me, it's why I recommended it to be this way. I can understand why you want to talk about it. Like, let's say that it costs $15,000 and it's, I don't know, for a golf cart that Public Works is going to use. They're still not going to, you know, if it's unconditional, which means that you give them the money, they give you the object, there is nothing for the attorney to review there. There's no potential for confusing terms.
Okay, so that, so in that instance, would that fall under section... would that fall under Section B, quotes to be obtained?
Yes. Everything that, unless it falls under the... Well, there really are no exceptions to that other than it's not possible to get the quotes. And then the city manager would explain the efforts they undertook and, and why it wasn't possible to obtain multiple quotes. But yes, if the city manager wanted to spend $15,000 on a golf cart, then this ordinance would direct the city manager to receive quotes from three different vendors.
And then make the purchase without your oversight? And after the fact, notify the city council?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I think if it's...
Yes, go ahead.
If it's, if it's over 10,000, they would still have to notify us. Same with the contract. And if it's over 25,000, they couldn't do it without our approval.
Right.
It's the same restriction. It's just...
But again, that's after the fact.
For 10,000, yeah. But the same thing with a contract for 10,000 as a purchase.
Right. And so, Councilwoman Bell?
Thank you. I guess my question is in regards, this is about procurement, right? Soliciting services for business purposes. Is that correct, Stephen?
Some aspects of this, specifically subsection B about the quotes, are a procurement policy. The next item on our agenda is a more robust procurement policy ordinance. But, but yes, it's in part correct that this does involve procurement.
So with that regard, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my, I don't have a concern with that because as, as been mentioned, anything over 10,000 would come to us. And remember, y'all, we approve the budget. So we would see if there were any excessive allocations or expenditures in regards from the administrative side. But the other thing is, this is more about the liability from my perspective of the city. Getting in contracts with businesses and just like not having full oversight of visibility from the legal perspective. So for me, I, I have no concern about this. And I do think I'm in favor of we going on the consent.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So one quick question. I did note there wasn't a clear limitation on the duration of contracts that the city manager will be authorized to sign. For example, while we do have the stringer, section on stringers, which limits it to $25,000 in a year, my reading of this would not prevent a 25-year contract for $25,000 a year to be signed. So assuming I'm reading that correctly, is that something that we want to put some kind of a limitation on? Just to, you know, say, hey, look, over, you know, you can sign something within a calendar year, over the two calendar years. It may be captured and, you know, having to spend within the budget. But it, my, my sense would be it might be good to have that clarified a little further. But I'm interested in your opinion, Mr. Quinn.
I'm just trying to think what the pros and cons would be. I mean, the, I think the pro would be that it would manage long-term liabilities. But with the $25,000 cap, it's not going to be a substantial liability. I, I can't think of any cons. So I don't object at all that we would just add a language, if, if the council wants to put this restriction that, you know, that the, the, the contract must be completely performed within a year or, you know, whatever the amount of time is that you had in mind.
Okay. And I'll, I'll turn to the city manager. You know, having that, maybe having that restriction where it is a year, would that impede what you would need to do?
No, ma'am. I, I think a year is fine.
Okay.
You know, anything outside of a year, I would of course be coming to the council and, pardon me, of course, working with our city attorney anyway.
Right. And so, but to, to that point, we have to make sure whoever's in the seat, you know, you might do the right thing, but you know, we've got to make sure whoever's sitting in the seat.
Yes.
That we make sure that it's across the board in terms of adhering to that piece of it.
So in that case, I mean, Mayor, I wouldn't have any objections. And I would recommend maybe adding that, that it would be no more than a one-year contract.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilwoman Bell?
So to that point, in regards to what the mayor just disclosed, you know, we're thinking about it long-term. We're thinking about whoever is the administrative leader of the day-to-day of the city. But is that not an administrative policy? Does that need to be codified in the ordinance, Stephen?
Well, it just, I mean, this is a delegation of authority. So if the council wants to limit that, then I think it does need to be in the ordinance. To not put it in the ordinance is to allow for that rule not to be followed. And I'm not saying it's an essential rule, but if it's a desired rule, then I do think it should be in the ordinance.
And I'll, if I may...
Yes.
And I'll add an, an example. I'm going to be very vague with this example. But there are cases where, you know, within organizations or businesses, you'll have a CEO that will sign a bunch of contracts that may not be, you know, that may be based on a, a great year, you know, but not really well thought out in terms of strategic projections for the finances of the institution, you know, organization, company, you know, what have you may be. And so that's sort of what I'm looking for is do we have a little bit of a check to make sure we don't end up with, you know, and, and I fully trust your leadership on this. I don't think you would make a decision like this. But to, to your point, Madam Mayor, we have to legislate beyond the person. You know, we have to legislate to the role. And making sure that we have some kind of little check that prevents that from happening. You know, if we wanted to put a, a minimum, say, hey, you know, contracts that are going to be above X, you know, $10,000 a year, for example, you know, and go beyond that spending limit, you know, just to give you a little more wiggle room. I, I have no idea on the, the specifics of how many contracts this would encompass. I definitely want you to be able to do your job and be able to execute without having to get us to check your grammar on every single tiny little detail. But that's sort of what, how I'm thinking about this and kind of what I'm trying to prevent.
Right. And, and also to that point is that we can do an evaluation after a year, you know, to see in terms of the total number of either contracts or other things, just so we as a governing body can also evaluate whether or not we need to make modifications to it. Does that work? Okay. And so before I go to you, Councilwoman Hood, that is something of the pleasure of the body to add the year clause into the document so that we can make sure the city attorney can move forward with that. Is that fine with the body? Yes. Okay, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes. I was not able, when I spoke before, to bring up another item, question that I had here. And the reason I'm very serious about this sort of thing is I have seen firsthand and working in local government where a weekly written policy was able to be abused tremendously. And so I'm, I'm very focused on making sure that we belt and suspend or the controls that we are handing off. And one of them I have a concern about is that it shall be a sufficient procurement process for the city manager to make a good faith effort, this is B, to obtain quotes from three potential vendors offering goods and services. Such quotes shall be obtained in writing where practicable. And in these days of email and texting and everything else, I, I think having these bids in writing is very important. Except in the case of an emergency, I can't imagine how this kind of information couldn't be put in writing. And it doesn't need to be elaborate, et cetera. So I, I would suggest that we state that it is in writing. And another thing is that I have seen some dealing with friends and neighbors. And that was perfectly legal. Somebody had to get three quotes. One of them was their uncle. And they always got the business. So this issue may be covered in our ethics or employment regs for a city manager. But could, would it be reasonable to add something to this where the city manager makes a written statement that there's no personal connection here or business connection or something like that? Is that, is this issue covered elsewhere?
Okay.
And I'm not taking any offense to that.
Well, and, and again, to Councilwoman Hood's point, she's not looking at the person, but the role. And to make sure that from wherever we have in terms of our ethics, that, you know, just as we have to do disclosure as council members and we have to step back in terms of someone, us having some type of financial implications with something, we have to disclose that or do whatever, that's, is that what you're...
That's exactly what I'm talking about. And this is, you know, this is based on real life happenings. And, and it's very hard to find out after the fact.
So I am not sure in the moment that the city's ethics ordinance applies to anyone other than the elected officials. I, I need to look at that, the city. Would it be appropriate to add a section in here that says the city manager can't enter into a contract with blank, and I'm going to come back to why I said blank, categories of people, I think, sure? I think that if we're going to do that, we should define it objectively by saying something like family members or anyone with whom the city manager has a financial relationship. Because to say that, you know, who's to say who's your friend and who's not? And if you deal at arm's length with someone in business for a period of time, then who's to say whether that's your friend or not? And how do we judge? So I would caution against using loose terms. But yeah, I think that putting a restriction in there and then if you want to have the, if the council wants to, you could kind of do it in two ways or both. One would be to just say in here that it's a violation of the policy to enter into a contract or purchase goods from someone that you have a familial or financial relationship with. Level two is to make the city manager affirm that they're not doing that each time. So yeah, I mean, I think if the city manager is trying to do something shady with a financial dealings, that probably wouldn't be a huge obstacle to them, the fact that they have to certify that they're not doing exactly what they're doing, which they know is wrong when they're doing it. But having that in the ordinance would at least be a, some level of dissuasion from doing it. And if it, if they got caught, then it would give the city something very palpable and definite to point to if they wanted to terminate for cause.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Councilman Perkins?
So, so to that, I'd definitely be in support of, I think, cleaning some stuff up when regard to our ethics ordinance. So to give you a little head start, one of the loopholes, I think, I don't know how strong of a loophole it is, since it's not my field. But the articles within our code regarding the city manager say that the city manager is basically beholden to our code of ethics. However, there's nothing in the code of ethics that specifically mentions the city manager. It's mayor, council, mayor, council, mayor, council. You know, and so if I'm looking at that and trying to find a loophole, I'd say, well, technically, none of this applies specifically to me because I'm not mentioned, assuming I were a city manager trying to do something naughty. So my suggestion would be we maybe clean that up. I don't know if this extends the timeline too long in the ethics. And then just reference, you know, maybe there needs to be a purchasing procurement, something that just outlines the city manager piece or clarifies that conflict, conflict of interest as we've already defined it. You know, cleans it up if need be, to your point, Mr. Quinn. And then just reference that in the procurement policy as a reminder. I'm not, not a hill I'll die on if we want to have someone sign a document every time. I do feel like that's, you know, I don't know how preventative that will be. But that's my take on it.
Well, the situation is...
Well, wait a minute, Counsel. Wait a minute. Thank you. So to that point, this does not have to be voted on next week. So we have the option to make any additions or changes between that time based on what we have to do with the previous item. So take all of this in. We already know from a starting point, we wanted to add the year. We can allow the city manager and the attorney to look at other pieces to it, to your point, in terms of ensuring that any disclosures need to be addressed. And so the proper way to do that disclosure, is that fine for the body? Because we're not going to do anything next week with this one, if you like, because we have to wait.
Were we wanting to still put it on the consent agenda for next week with the caveats? Or it sounds like we're adding a little bit more to it?
Yeah, I would recommend just holding it for the next week since it can't become effective anyway. And that'll give an opportunity for a couple of things. One is for me and the city manager to think about the exact language and improvements we want to make. And then another is for the council to talk about this again at the next work session. And we won't even be losing any time because it can't become effective until then anyway.
Right. So thank you for the robust discussion that changed it from a consent until next month's agenda. So thank you all for that. With that, I will say that we would like to make this on the consent agenda to defer to the next work session, next month's work session. Is that fine for everyone? Okay. Yes?
Madam Mayor, and so can I just say one thing about the procurement?
Sure.
One of the things that, as someone that has...
And Ms. Cameron, state, state who you are.
Lisa Cameron, thank you so much, and planning and economic development director. But as someone that has done numerous of procurement policies, what you're discussing is actually in that document. It doesn't just limit a city manager. It, it limits employees for, you know, conflicts of interest and not being able to do certain things. So a lot of the stipulation that you're saying is, as you consider putting it in, in an ordinance, is typically a policy from an administrative position. So it, 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 I'm sure it was, it's going to be stated in our procurement policies, but that's typically where you would find those, those concerns and those wordings.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I know that the team is going to come together to make sure all of those pieces are in the appropriate location. So thank you for that piece as well. With that, do we have anyone signed up for this particular item? I don't see Mr. Moore in the audience.
Yeah, he was the only one.
Okay. All right. Thank you. He's done. Okay, he said his piece. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay. With that, we'll close this item. And so this would be on consent to be deferred to the next month's work session. Is that, okay. Thank you. The next one is to discuss an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the city code regarding administration to establish a new procurement policy and for other purposes. Interim city manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. City code section 2-5 currently requires all contracts or purchases of goods or services costing greater than $5,000 to go through a public bid procurement process involving publication in the decap champion. involving publication in the DeKalb Champion newspaper. Uh, this is an unduly restrictive requirement that is burdensome for city staff and is an obstacle to timely acquisition of necessary goods and services. And quite frankly, Mayor, to be honest, we haven't been doing this. So, uh, the proposed ordinance would still require a public bid procurement process for purchases in an amount greater than $25,000, but would allow this to be done through a state purchasing website, which is in the modern way of doing, uh, public bids. And the ordinance also recognizes a number of situations for which exceptions are made to the general rule, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions? And I think to Ms. Cameron's comment earlier, um, that, you know, in terms of this would be the section where all the pieces that we would talk about would be in this area. Is that correct?
Um, just as long as you want to...
I just want to make sure.
Well, yes and no. I mean, these contracts are going to come before the city council.
Mm-huh.
So, I didn't consider the potential steering of contracts to someone that would benefit a staff member. But I think that is a legitimate concern and might be something that we wanted to add to this. You know, since the council is making the ultimate decision, I guess it would look like a disclosure.
Mm-huh.
You know, I don't know to what level we would want that to go down to. Usually, these policies are addressed to the level of the purse string. And, you know, so hypothetically, a department head could have the relationship, not disclose it. But I mean, they're going to have to win a public process anyway. Uh, and so, if a department head has a relationship with someone that has the best bid, is, would we want to go to the next, next bidder? I don't know. Would we want to pay more under those circumstances? I, I don't know.
I think it's more, to your point, that it's known and not an after, afterthought in that, you know, in the process, we find out that someone did have a relationship and may be able to say, hey, you know, make it 10,000 less than what you need to do because they also have inside knowledge of that. And so, you know, you have to be mindful of those things because, again, we're looking at this from the roles of everyone and not just who, we have amazing staff now. And so, I just want to make sure that as we do these changes, because this is new, is, as the interim city manager said, you know, um, what we had before, you know, up to use, it was not being followed, right? And so, let's be honest about that. And so, we need to make sure whatever we do, we're looking at it and we're making sure that it's something that we're all adhering to it. And where there are gotchas, you know, that if we know that in advance, that we're taking care of that now. And so, I see, uh, I'm going to let Councilwoman Carroll, but I'll let Councilwoman Bell say something.
So, my suggestion is just...
I'm going to let Councilwoman Bell. And then you...
Go ahead. Up here, I already started. Go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilwoman Carroll.
My suggestion is I think there's already a disclosure where if there's any donation to the mayor or the city council for any contract. So, I was thinking we could just make that disclosure also. Do you have any, like, familiar, familial relationship or financial relationship with, you know, anyone on the staff or elected government? And just make that as part of any contract. And that way, at least the city council would have that information and be able to judge for themselves if it's still the best bid or not.
Thanks.
Yeah, that, that's very close to what I was thinking, too. To, to go back to what Mr. Perkins referenced earlier, that we have some good ethical rules that deal with exactly what we're talking about. And we could clarify slash add that those pertain to the city employees as well. And, uh, I, I would see that as a separate ordinance from this.
Mm-huh.
Um, and so, that's what I would recommend, is that what I'll look at if, if the council agrees is creating a new ordinance that is like conflicts of interest for employees. And it'll contemplate that they are subject to the exact same rules as the city council. And as I get into it, I'll think about what else we need. But that's kind of the main idea. In that way, you know, this is clean because this is, I'm an employee or I'm the city manager and I need some goods or services. I look to this section and here's what it is. And then, you know, ethical duties are separate and that's going to apply in all kinds of situations.
Okay. All right. Does that sound, and Councilwoman Bell, to your comment?
No, I think they made the appropriate recommendation. I'm thinking, though, uh, in regards to this being on a, a state purchasing website, I, I'm, I'm wondering if there is a component of it where we can ask the actual bidder, you know, if you have any relationship with anybody in the city. I think we would know it on the front end and it'd be a part of the application process, whether it's found or not later on. But I do think that we can move forward with the recommendation that my colleague just mentioned, uh, and Stephen suggested, uh, in regards to putting it, uh, in writing about just relationships with staff and, um, making sure that they're upholding us to the highest level, ethical level.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, just so to your, uh, point earlier on, um, you know, making sure there's not backroom dealing, um, you know, if we wanted to tighten it up, you know, because these are sealed bill bids, I think it would be pretty simple to include a line somewhere in there, you know, just if you were involved in the evaluation process, you know, because, you know, I'll pick on Public Works. Say somebody in Public Works has a friend, has a landscaping company, there's no financial interest, and they say, hey, listen, we have a, you know, this just went out for RFP, you should submit. I don't personally see that, you know, as being a problem, as long as they're not evolved, involved in creating the RFP, you know, per se, or, you know, evaluating contractors. And I think that's where we get into, you know, some of the, the red area, as, as my colleagues have mentioned. Second, I do think some of this may be outlined in our employee handbook as well. Um, it's been a while since I've, I've read through that, but that might also be a good stand, starting point for, for some of this. It's just saying, hey, is there any language from the City Code of Ethics that pertains to mayor and council and the employee handbook? Maybe there's some ideas from there, you know, as we create this, just to make sure that we do have, you know, you know, clear, um, well-defined, um, you know, definitions of what, you know, collusion is, what a conflict of interest is, you know, so that our staff can perform optimally and, you know, we don't get into, people just throwing stuff at each other for no reason as well. So, it's kind of, I'm looking at the two, two extremes of this, is making sure staff can actually execute things. We don't just create a different type of administrative, you know, burden. But then we also don't end up with, you know, uh, creating holes where corruption can happen. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And to that point, like this item, we can defer this item until next, um, next month's work session to allow, um, staff to have the opportunity to review all of our documents and then to also make the recommendations, um, for what we need to do, since we don't have to rush that. And Councilman Carroll?
So, this one doesn't have to wait for the charter change?
Right.
So, I don't see, I don't see a reason to not go ahead with it and then just do a separate ethics thing that Stephen is going to do, because I don't know that we necessarily need to change this.
Okay. So, and thank you, Councilman Carroll. So, based on what you previously said, uh, City Attorney Quinn, this is a clean document, right?
Right.
And so, this being a clean document, we can keep this as the foundation for what we need to do from the procurement piece. Anything in terms of the ethics or different components that we want to do in terms of safeguards, we can either ensure that the, the, the documents that need to have it, whether it's the employee manual, whether it's creating another ordinance, that those will have in terms of policy, you can make sure that that's covered between you and staff. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I agree. The one, the one clarification I would add is I think it might behoove us to add one sentence to this ordinance that says all, um, requests for bids or proposals shall require the bidder or proposer to affirm that they do not have a familial or financial relationship with mayor, council, or any employee, or I would say maybe or, uh, department head employees. Because, you know, if you, if, if, if I'm a business and my cousin works for Public Works and my contract has nothing to do with that, I don't see any interest that's being served there. So, maybe we would say the department that is putting out this solicitation, those employees.
Yeah, I would want it to at least disclose. So, if like there's a Public Works person that has a cousin who's business is just amazing at bidding, I wouldn't want to, like, preclude them from ever doing business with the city.
Mm-huh.
But at the same time, I would want to know that before I made the decision in the bid.
Yeah. Okay. So, disclose rather than swear you don't.
Right. Right. That's, that's fine. I think, and, and Councilwoman Bell, I'll let you talk. I think that's the most important piece is we're just, we're just trying to make sure we know, right? And, and so, you know, they can have a marvellous, marvelous bid, but at least when we're making that decision, everything is disclosed. And so, as a body, if someone came back to us and said something, we can all say that we know about it. And so, that's the biggest piece that we just want to make sure in terms of transparency to ourselves and the community. That's the biggest thing. And Councilwoman Bell?
Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, my, so I hear what my colleagues have said and Stephen as well. The financial relationship is more important to me than the familiarity or just family relationship, because I think that that's a larger conversation and y'all can push back if y'all, uh, so choose to. But I think even if, like, say for example, we use a public works. So, the public works director has, you know, one of the bids comes from a cousin. As long as they're not directly, maybe there's some way administratively, what the supervision doesn't come directly from it. Because if they have, you know, a good track record and the application is solid and they also have the experience, I don't want to exclude them from getting the, the bid just because they, they know each other or they're long distance family. If you're talking about a cousin, that could be five, six, seven down the line. So, I, for me, I'm more so concerned about financial and the risk that it's going to impose on the city than necessarily the familiarity with folks, especially because a lot of these folks went to school together or maybe they worked together at previous, you know, industries. So, I, I'm just a little concerned about that, um, component of it, but the financial, I definitely agree. And that should be a part of that, Miss Stephen.
And, and Councilwoman Bell, to your point, you know, we go deep with like our fifth, sixth cousins, so, uh, you know, how we define that. But just, I think, to your point, it's not that we would not take the bid, it's just a matter of knowing the relationship. That's, it's, it's not to exclude the opportunity for them being considered in the bid process. Is that what everyone is...
I just want disclosure. The council will make the decision once they have the information.
We, we could say immediate family if that seems more relevant than just any family member.
Yeah, because you know, we go six, seven cousins deep. Yes.
Can I make a proposal on this? So, I, I would be in favor of this being on consent with, um, a version of, I think, what you're suggesting, Mr. Quinn. So, maybe we have the, just turn it into a disclosure, have the things we want disclosed. And then we just reference our code of ethics and we know we need to go and update that. So, it just says, you know, I'm disclosing any family relationships, you know, and any additional things as covered in, you know, insert code reference here. That'll allow us, you know, we can, we can go back and have a longer discussion of, you know, aren't, you know what? We didn't think this was a problem? It's a problem. You know, cousins are out, you know, if they're third cousins, you know, whatever that is. But that way, you know, we do have the disclosure, we're tracking things now, we have the data, you know, instead of not having it. Um, and, and then we can update the references needed. Would my colleagues be opposed to that? You know, having the modification, say we want a disclosure, Mr. Quinn can come up with a, you know, however he feels the best phrasing for that, you know, is, you know, to update, you know, this, uh, this change here. And then we'll address the ethics, you know, defining that when we address the other ethics issues.
Okay. That's Councilwoman Hood.
So, what you're saying...
Talk into the mic and we can't hear you. Thank you.
So, you, the suggestion is that we put it on this, this D, item D, that we put it on consent agenda and there will be a change in it from, right? I, I would not put it on consent agenda until I see what the change is.
Okay. That's fair.
That's fair. So, but for our staff to make that change, is it okay that to Councilman Perkins' point, that it's simply a reference to what other ethics that we have or policy as it relates to?
I have a small concern about doing it by reference.
Mm-huh.
Because that requires the bidder to look something else up. And what I think would be most effective is if, because these instructions are to the city manager, basically.
Mm-huh.
So, if the city manager puts in the bid, disclose to us as part of your bid if you have any of these relationships. I think that should get it done because the ethics ordinance doesn't apply to anyone outside of the organization. And then I think what Mr. Perkins said is definitely a good idea of tuning that up for our internal rules.
Mm-huh.
So, that's only a slight difference, but that's what I would recommend.
Okay.
If I may, I, I think you're getting at what I was, what I, I think we're on the same page. Because I, I think that, you know, you can have your criteria, hey, bids are going to get denied if you violate this anyway. So, yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
From my perspective.
Okay. So, this won't be on consent and we'll make the necessary changes based on the conversation this evening. And Councilwoman Bell, I just want to make sure you're okay, because I can't see you.
Yeah, I don't have any objections to that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, with that, do we have anyone signed up for this ordinance? Okay. All right. So, we're done with that. And since items, we're going to new business, since items six A and six B are me, I will defer to the senior member of the council, um, since Vice Mayor Johnson is out, and I will have Councilwoman Carroll to preside since I'm going to be talking and I have to have somebody manage me. All right. Councilwoman Carroll?
All right. So, the next one, hopefully we won't go over 20 minutes. It's item six A, uh, discuss a proclamation for May 10th as Mayor's Book Club Day. And I'll hear from Mayor Perks.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Carroll. So, in the interest is you, what you heard this evening about our early learning, one of the things that I'm very fortunate to be able to do is the Georgia Municipal Association has a mayor's book club. And so, they encourage all the mayors in the state to start literacy programs within their city. And so, what you see attached is the proclamation that has come from, um, GMA. And so, this is my charge, especially since we are looking at early learning, to make sure that we are getting books for our youth. I'm very grateful to our Early Learning Task Force and CDF because we've actually started getting some free books that we're going to distribute during the summer. And so, we're working on making sure we get some more free books so that we can encourage our young people to read. And so, I wanted to make sure that, um, May 10th, and you'll understand with the next proclamation, that we have that day as the Mayor's Book Club Day. And that ends my comments for the proclamation. As you see, I'm not going to read the whole proclamation, but it is to focus on making sure that we encourage our children to read and provide them access and have that information. And I'm going to work with the library as well so that we can do those things to ensure that our children read. And that concludes my report.
Consent?
Quick question.
Yes.
He's got a recognition.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, yes, I recognize you.
Thank you. Do these need to be approved as to form, that I just noticed, I mean, it's a real clerical issue on the, for proclamations?
No. Um, the, the charter under City Attorney says approve, uh, ordinances and rev, resolutions having the force of law, which essentially means that someone could have a negative consequence, like legally.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah. So, you don't have to approve it, but, you know, we just go through the process so you know.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I'm okay with the consent. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I'm okay with the consent. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bell, I assume you don't have an issue with that?
No, definitely, because it is.
All right. Any comments in the public? I think it's going to go on consent agenda item, and our next item is item 6B, which is to discuss a proclamation for May 10th as Kids' Day. And I'll recognize Mayor Burks.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Carol. And so on that same note, and especially with early learning, I started this year with our Tottstown Hall. Okay, and Tottstown Hall is a quarterly activity for children six and under, for them to learn about democracy, local government, and how we work and function, and to encourage our next set of leaders and start the job pool for all the wonderful positions that we have. This is the second one that we had in terms of the Tottstown Hall, but this one was a little different. They actually came and sat on the council chamber, sat in the seats. As you see, we have them talking to our police officers, because we wanted to connect them and have that relationship and see community policing and address any questions that they had and understand the difference between an emergency call and a non-emergency call. And, yes, and so the, the icebreaker was, what was your favorite dessert? Right? And so just to find those things that connected with the children. And so you see there, we have council members and we have vice mayors. And the, the thing that they did was create a proclamation. And when I say they created a proclamation, they did everything in terms of telling, telling us what they wanted for Kids' Day, telling us the date. They made motions, they seconded the motions, they voted on it. And so we wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to understand what government is all about. They were teens, and as you see, they, we had storytellers to read one of the books that comes from GMA. And they learned about recycling. And so we're covering all of their activities. And that's my little mayor, right there. And so we wanted to make sure, and this proclamation was made by them. So when they said they wanted splash pads and they wanted, you know, I modified it to say infrastructure, right? And so, but they're learning the terminology, they're learning about all of the different pieces of our city. And so it's giving them a chance to be involved. And I want to thank Roberta and all the other people who are supporting this. And one of the other great pieces about it is that one of the students was from Afghan. And so we actually had someone who was a translator there. And so at first, you know, he was just there, but with the translator, his eyes lit up and he got involved and he participated. And so it reminds us of how we need to be as inclusive as possible when we're dealing with our community. And so I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity to do this and this proclamation. And so when they did it, I got a phone call from their, the facility. We had one of our early learner scholars to bring some of the students, and we had another group that was at the International Bible Church. But they made this book. And they had a book to show all of their experiences during this. And so if you notice, as everyone knows, my official color is green. So they got me in this green dress in every one of these pages, okay? So some variation to green. But I wanted to show you because the instructor said, and see, this is them on the council, sitting at the council, right? So we're creating memories. And so that's the most important thing that we're doing, is making sure with these students that we're creating memories so that they will be encouraged to vote. They will be encouraged to be a part of this process. This is police, see Chief, we got police in there. And so we got the green, they got me. I don't know why I look like a little piggy. But it's okay. But they got the green. And so, see, this is one of my favorite ones right there, so you can see that. But again, and then they gave, also gave this wonderful proclamation thing to say thank you. And if you, the, most of the kids were five years old. Okay, so they took time to learn how to write this out and had them as vice mayor and council members, okay? And so again, these are creating memories that will be instilled in them. And I told them that as part of this proclamation, this will be in our history. So they can go back when they're adults and see how they were a part of the process. And so again, if the council will have this on consent, I want to say thank you. Once, if this is approved, then I will sign it with them as a surprise, so that we can do full circle in terms of their involvement. So that concludes my report. Councilwoman Carol.
All right. And any comments from the council?
I did have one, one quick question on it, just on the, because it, really, it's a timeline question. I'm assuming, have you been able to have conversations with business owners kind of in preparation for this? Or has their staff been able to kind of tee this up? Just in terms of the events that mentions encouraging businesses, organizations to deserve this day with programs, ceremonies, activities?
Not yet, but we'll do it. So we'll make sure.
So my follow-up, my follow-up suggestion would be, is that enough time to really get people thinking and have the impact? I mean, I'll preface this with saying, this is absolutely great. But I just had it, it was just a concern, a little bit of concern on the timeline.
Oh, no, and, and Roberta and I, we've already started talking about some of the activities that we're going to do for that day, especially in terms of getting some of the early scholars, just to say, hey, letting some of our businesses know if they want to participate, great. But we kind of have activities in terms of what we're going to do with the kids already. And thank you for bringing that point.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the council? Can this be consent? Or I see Y T Bell, did she have?
Yep, thank you. Appointed Councilmember Carol for leading the meeting today. Um, so Mayor, thank you for leading on this effort. I think the Kids' Day proclamation, I have no issue with it. The only thing that I would recommend is that for the involvement of the rest of the council, only because we all have different backgrounds and, you know, I appreciate you making memories with them, but we're also building a pipeline of leadership. So wanting to know that we all come from diverse backgrounds and also mentor them to take our seats, hopefully. Because that's what, you know, leaders do, you work out of a job. So just convene y'all for the proclamation and all the work that you've been doing. But definitely would love to support however y'all deem appropriate.
Okay, and thank you for that. We're going to get you involved, because we're definitely going to have you as special guest. So don't worry about that. You're going to be a part of it. And in fact, we actually had GMA to come to the last Tottstown Hall, and they're going to feature that. And they even asked us to work with the schools. So they have a program that's going to go from now, they're supposed to do an arts activity. And so once we get that through Indian Creek, I would definitely invite all the council who can come out to participate, okay?
All right, are we, are we good for consent for this one? I think so. Any comments in the public? All right, this item goes on consent. And now I'll defer back to Mayor for item 6C.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carol. So we will now proceed with item C, which is to discuss a resolution authorizing in agreement with Bowman Moody Enterprises LLC for professional procurement services in the amount of $3,500 monthly for three to six months. Interim City Manager Jones.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. As the council may recall, back in January, you requested that the interim city manager, that I do RFPs or RFQs for professional services for the position of solicitor, city attorney, our financial auditor, audiovisual services. Also, since that time, I've been asked to do, or requested to, to do an RFP or RFQ for a housing plan. And that's just to name a few that we will need to do. I, at that time, should share it with you that we do not have a staff person specifically on board to manage our procurement process. And therefore, because of that desire, I reached out, actually, to Mr. Willis Moody, who owns Bowman Moody Enterprises LLC. He is a former procurement manager and has over 18 years of experience in public procurement. He is here this evening. I believe he brought his family as well. So I'll have him come up and share a little bit about his background. But the proposed services agreement would be for $3,500 per month for a term of three months up to six months, to begin May 8th. So hopefully, this will be approved and he'll start the next day, because we got a lot to get done. And he would be working in the office three days a week, 8:30 to 5:00, and remote two days a week. And of course, we would alternate that schedule, two days a week in the office, three days a week remotely. And he comes with a good procurement background, as I mentioned. And I'll turn it over to him to share a little bit about his background. But you heard the conversation about the procurement policy. He and I talked about that as one of his scope of services that he would be assisting with. And I know, you know, those terms of non-collusive affidavits, affidavits, conflict of interest forms, all of those things you're very much familiar with. So that's what he would be assisting us with as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Moody.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Go by Will Moody. Former procurement administrator for the city of College Park. I do come with 18 years of public procurement, including Georgia Lottery Corporation, and coming out of there. I did speak with Ms. Tammy weeks ago, so I do have an understanding of where we're trying to go with this project. And I do have drafts ready, just waiting for a contract. I have procurement policy ready that has outlined everything that you discussed, which would go into that policy, really not an ordinance to get tied to anything. It would just need to be adhered to and followed and approved by Mayor and Council once you look at the draft of everything to move forward.
Any questions for, for Mr. Moody? Nope, nope, okay. Is there something for consent?
Support of that.
Consent?
Oh, I did have one point, I'm sorry. Yes, consent agenda.
Okay.
Relative to the AV services for city council meetings, and I think that would be for the court also. This was my particular question is, before we go out for bids, we need to determine whether we can use efficiently and effectively what we already have. And so that report would need to be made before we then decide to go out.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. Actually, the mayor and I have had a conversation about that. From my understanding, the equipment to run the council meetings is still not completely in operation. We are hopefully going to try to get that done as soon as possible. I got our staff working on that. And we may have to draft the assistance of Mr. Hammond to assist us to see what we need to do. But yes, we will make sure that we have a report coming forth about that.
All right, thank you. And yes, the consent.
Okay, yes, and Councilwoman Bell? I just want to make sure.
No objections to consent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you on 8th.
Did you want to introduce your family?
Yes.
So I have my mother-in-law, Enda Bowman. She's retired after 35 years of procurement. My granddaughter, Nova Luster, my son, Willis Moody Jr., my lovely wife, McCrea Shumody. She's the other half of Bowman Moody. And my volleyball daughter, Joy, who's doing these competitions that's got me running around.
Okay, all right, I understand that. Well, thank you for bringing your family. Love to see a family business, so keep it up. Thank you. So with that, that's consent. We will move to item D, which is to discuss a resolution to renew Girma properties and liability coverage for the policy period of 5.1, 2024 to 4.30, 2025 through the GMA Property and Liability Self-Insurance Program funded through the general fund budget, and that would be Mr. Deffnall, our finance director.
Good evening. Yeah, this is our annual renewal. We get our liability coverage through Girma, the Georgia Interlocal Management Agency. And it's the self-insurance fund through GMA. We're in the pool with all the other cities. And this is our annual coverage. We don't get this inform, we got this information from Girma on April 1st, so we didn't have time to get it on last month's agenda. And of course, once I get it, I do a comprehensive financial breakdown, analyzing the variances, where the increases were. And I've outlined that in the detail here. Most of the increase in coverage for this year has to do with liability insurance on our vehicles. We've got a new, a newer fleet that we've replaced vehicles over the last few years. So most of the, the increase in the, the coverage is related to vehicles. We actually had some deductions in our overall corporate liability and some of those things, so.
Okay, and council, did you have any questions on this particular item? Okay, hearing none. Is, would this be on consent? Okay, did we have anyone signed up? And I'll make sure I get your Councilwoman Bell. Did you have a question, Councilwoman Bell?
No, I just had a recommendation. I moved it to consent, but you had said it already.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. Did anyone sign up for this one?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this will be on consent. And I guess, Mr. Deffnall, you just stay where you are, because the next couple are you. And so we'll move to item 6E, which is to discuss the use, uses of the National Opioid Settlement Distribution in the amount of $7,757.76 received by the city. Mr. Deffnall.
Yeah, this is just to bring to your attention that back in April 2022, the city council approved a resolution to participate in the State of Georgia Local Government Memorandum of Understanding Concerning the National Distribution of Opioid Settlement Monies. These monies come from pharmacies and those kinds of institutions. So far, since, up until now, we have received a total of $7,757,000. And as part of, I mean, $7,757,000. So it's not huge money, but we'll have more coming in. And we need to approve, this is sitting in our restricted grants fund for now. But we need to come up with a plan of how we'll utilize that. So I've included that part of what was in the memorandum, so we can narrow down what, what we think we can use those funds for and put a plan in place.
And can you mention those so, so everyone kind of has an understanding?
One is like to provide Narcan for the police department. Medical, medication-assisted treatment. There's services for pregnant and postpartum women, expanding treating neonatal care. There's a huge list.
Okay, and Councilwoman Carol?
Haven't changed genders yet, did I know of, but I was going to suggest Narcan. Just because it's only $7,000, I don't know if we have enough to really start any program that's more complicated or expensive than that. But $7,000 could buy, you know, quite a few doses of Narcan for police and maybe other first responders, just in case there's an overdose.
Okay, and Chief, are you already getting the Narcan or?
We are.
Yeah, okay, so I know they're getting that. Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Dan, for presenting this to us today and just letting us know these special revenue funds exist. I, I've talked to Judge Miller about this before, about drug court and mental health courts. I think that based off of the list of programs, prevention programs, we have listed on here as a recommendation. I think we definitely could implement it based off of what we're seeing that's coming out of the courts. That would be beneficial, because it is a small amount, and even if it's training just for the staff. So I think that there are a few things that we could utilize the funds for. But, I mean, the immediate need, I think we should also consult with courts just to find out what we're seeing and like individuals, the level of substance abuse that's coming in and how we can prevent it long-term for treatment purposes.
Okay, and Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So to the points, I agree with the sentiment that, you know, it's not a lot of money, so let's maybe try and use it the most efficient way possible. I'm wondering just if I can jump on and add to what Councilman, or Councilwoman Bell is saying. I'm wondering just if I can jump on and add to what Councilwoman Bell is saying. You know, maybe this could be something where we're providing training and Narcan for family members or support groups. I don't know if there's a way to do that through the courts. So this is something where we want to kick it to our staff to come up with, you know, maybe a real simple proposal. You know, y'all know the details, you know what resources you already have to maybe cover some gaps there. I think we have some folks with social work backgrounds on staff as well. Maybe we can bribe them with some food or something like that, share some of their insight with us. But that would be my recommendation as well. I like where we're headed with this.
And I do agree, and we can use this, especially since we also have a youth council, you know, maybe one or two thousand that we can just set aside for them. But if staff could maybe make some, maybe some suggestions, and especially, Councilwoman Bell made the point, from what they're seeing in the court, I think that definitely would help us to determine some of these things. And Councilwoman Hood?
I think doing more research about where this amount of money would do the best good is an excellent idea. I'm not prepared to make a, take a vote on this tonight because the list of possibilities is so great. One possibility would also be to send it to one of our, after the research is done, send it to one of our standing advisory committees, get public input from our citizens.
Okay. That's great.
Would it be community development? It would be.
If I may.
Yes.
I think that might be more of a public safety thing, but my recommendation is that we not actually send it to committee, because this is a really, I mean, you kind of have to have some knowledge in this area. We're dealing with medical stuff as well, and so maybe this could be an RFP if we wanted to, just put it out to local nonprofits to say, come up with a plan, something in that area. But I'm not super comfortable having folks without qualifications weigh in a ton on this one.
Yes, let me respond to that. This would be after some information that's obtained from the courts, as Councilmember Bell suggested. And I'm not concerned so much about someone's medical knowledge or anything else, but I think this is an opportunity for citizens to have a say in how discretionary money is used. And I think even though, as we've said, there's not a lot of money, people may have firsthand knowledge of things in the community that maybe we don't know. And so that's why I was suggesting public input on this.
I'll just say one thing, then I'll stop. This is $7,500. I don't want to spend half of it in the process of deciding what to do with it. So that's all I'll say. I'll stop.
Okay. All right. So thank you. And so with that, with this particular item, now the wonderful train, nine o'clock. We can defer this so we can get some recommendations from the staff? Is that fine?
D defer to what? What are we thinking?
Because I don't know if you're going to be able to get it to us by next council meeting. Are you going to?
Mr. Deffnall, you think we can?
Well, I mean, I mean, which key staff would have some suggestions. I don't have any from my perspective. But yeah, we'd have to consult with some of the court.
Right.
And Yolanda, and, you know, some of the other staff.
Right. And Councilwoman Bell?
Just for upon a clear, just to make sure I'm sure, we don't have to take an official vote on this because he's just consulting with us. Correct, Mr. Monroe, now, Mr. Dan is consulting with us to let us know that the pot of money exists.
Right.
And like the output that we could have, but we don't have to make a determination by next Tuesday on this. Bring it to us for discussion, right?
Right, right.
Oh, so I just want to make sure we're clear on that. I don't know why we would defer. It's been discussed, let the city admin move forward with, you know, recommendations that they provide us, maybe data points, and the intended purpose of the prevention program. But this will be administrative from my perspective, but tell me if I'm wrong, if I'm thinking about it incorrectly.
So you want the staff to make the recommendations and implement those recommendations and then just report back to us? I just want to make sure.
That's correct.
Okay. Council, is that fine with you?
That's fine.
I'll be open it up.
That's fine with you?
Because we don't want to send it to a standing advisory committee. We can't hear you.
Put it on.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. So this is, if that's the pleasure of the council, that the council, the staff will advise us on what they're going to do with the money in terms of the $7,000, because it's not a whole lot of money to do, and just making sure in terms of you updating us on that. Okay? All right. And so that would be, we wouldn't necessarily say consent because all you're doing is we're discussing this, and so it's, we're allowing them to go ahead. Now, do you want us to make a motion to do that, or how do you want to do that? Just as a group, are we agreeing that the staff will take care of it? Is that fine? Okay. All right, I just want to make sure officially we got that covered.
Does it?
Yes.
Does it need to be a motion, or is it, I mean, if it's just administrative?
It's just administrative.
It's not a vote on it, just for discussion to begin with.
Right. Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yep.
All right, cool. All right, next item. We will have, you'll keep standing there, Mr. Deffnall, to discuss a resolution to implement an increase of fiscal year 2024 sanitation assessment fees to 317. That was approved at the February 6, 2024 city council meeting to cover cost of residential garbage and recycling services for fiscal year 2024. Mr. Deffnall?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We have this to implement the resolution. We brought this before you as we were approving the new contract for waste services and the proposed fee increase, but at that time, we didn't present a resolution. We have to provide a resolution to DeKalb County Tax Commissioner's Office for this to go on the tax bills, and this is to put the resolution forward for approval.
Okay. Okay. It's already been voted on, and is this something from a consent? Consent to everyone? Consent, Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay, thank you. So we didn't have anyone sign up for this item, right? Okay, I just want to double check. So this one would be as consent. I think you're safe to sit down now, Mr. Deffnall. Thank you for everything. So we'll move on to item G, which is to discuss a contract with Integrated Science and Engineering ISE Scope of Work for MS4 Permitting in the amount of $10,500 to be funded from the Stormwater Enterprise Program. Mr. Kaiser? I see Mr. Marcus coming up.
So ISE and? My firm have teamed up for the past eight years for the MS4 permitting. There are certain things that my staff does throughout the entire year, from development permit reviews to erosion containment control to inventory, a whole bunch of things along with public works. There are certain things that we don't do, we're not experts in them. ISE is. So ISE will provide, and they've been doing this, like I said, with us for at least seven years, I think it's going on eight now, where they do the weather screening, acquirement of EPDs as well as part of the MS4 permit, as well as the annual report. So the annual report, basically what we do is we feed them everything, they put it into the annual report, and then they have a former EPD inspector, Lisa Perret, who has been the city's reviewer for God knows how many years. So she retired, they hired her, and so she actually does the report and takes all of that and puts it in the report. So we typically never get a clean report. Back when we submit the report to EPD, we always get comments after the fact. I think every city does, every county does. I'm expecting with her on board, we expect to have very few comments from EPD three months after we submit the report in June. But anyways, a contract we've had with them forever, and they are a good firm. They also do our stormwater auditing, as you know, as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. And Mr. Marcus, did you have anything you wanted to say? And just let everyone know who you are.
No, I agree with what Larry said. We do a lot of the work, but they help compile and put everything together and make sure everything's accurate with their expertise, so they work hand-to-hand with us. It's a collaborative effort, so it's definitely beneficial.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Council, did you have any questions regarding this item? None? Okay. Is this something for consent? Okay, that's a, yes, okay, thank you. All right, we will have this as a consent agenda item, and that's G. We'll move, flip the page. And so this is item H, which is to discuss SPLAS II projects, list and changes recommended by the Housing and Infrastructure and Transportation Environment Committees. And I'll let Councilman Carroll take that away.
Yes, so earlier this month, we had a joint Housing, Infrastructure, and Transportation Environment Committee meeting on the SPLAS project lists, which I believe we need to submit now that the SPLAS is passed. And there is a proposed set of SPLAS projects that had been proposed by the staff and discussed by the council at the last council retreat. And so after a pretty long meeting, the Housing, Infrastructure, and Transportation Environment Committee recommended the changes of, first, omitting the 3601 couple mill project and replacing it with $200,000 for maintenance for existing SPLAS projects. And the rationale behind that was that this is probably not a project that would fit more with the greenway when it gets started. Not saying we will never fund it, but it may be more appropriate to fund it when the greenway is closer to construction, and there is a need for maintenance for existing SPLAS projects, so that money was reserved for that instead. The second change was for milling and resurfacing the streets. It would just basically be the worst streets, which are ranked 2 through 4 in Exhibit D, and reserving $200,000 for traffic calming, so that the council can as appropriate add in, whether it's, you know, speed tables or roundabouts or other traffic calming measures, that they can fund that as we go, as kind of as we resurface and mill these streets or other streets if needed. And the third change is for the sidewalk ADA installation, increasing that amount to $300,000 to cover Jolly Avenue South, which was a project added. So Jolly Avenue South is basically the part of Jolly that connects down to where Christopher Woods is, and that's a dangerous area where there's a hill and people walk on it all the time, but there's not a sidewalk to walk safely. So the recommendation was increasing the funds. That would have to eventually be a joint agreement with DeKalb, because part of that area is in DeKalb and part of it's in Clarkston. But I think it is important to make that street safer. So other than that, the Infrastructure Committee just recommended adopting the previous recommendations, which included demolishing the house at Forty Oaks, which I think the council's already passed separately, and funding a replacement. And Councilwoman Hood, was at the meetings, if you have anything to add?
Yes. And Councilwoman Hood?
Didn't you say Val?
I'm sorry?
No, you.
Okay. Yes. As I recall, there were some other changes. For instance, the $900,000 for SPLAS stations across the city with locations, and we didn't really endorse that.
We did endorse it, we just endorsed it in condition on their having a park plan for it.
I'm sorry, what?
That was endorsed by the committee. It just was endorsed in a condition of them coming to us with a plan for the park. We didn't select a site.
So we left the, so you're saying we left the $900,000?
Yes.
In place for splash pads?
Yes.
That's not my recollection.
Okay, I have notes that I can go back and I emailed everyone.
Yes, please.
That was, that was recommended by the committee. I mean, you may disagree with it now, we can discuss it, but it was what the committee agreed to.
And we may need to meet and compare notes because I just am not sure about some of these things. And my concern is that if we bring it this far and adopt it as council, then people are going to say, well, where are all these splash pads? And we definitely did not think that that was, again, as my recollection, that that was a good use. So why don't we defer this? Councilmember Carroll and I can get together and anyone else who was at that meeting, and we can, we can go over this.
Let's just, let's just do that this week before the vote.
I'm sorry?
I'll meet up with you this week before the vote.
Before next Tuesday?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so it sounds like this won't be consent so that the two committee leads will have a chance to review. But overall, do you have any other questions as it relates to this item? And the only other thing that I can think of is, we did say for some of the initiatives that we might refer to RFPs for what we would do for Forty Oaks and for Mylum Park.
Right. We asked for RFPs, but I don't think that changes the money.
Right, it doesn't change the money.
We just said that for the parks that we would want RFPs before we went forward with these, but the money would still stay in place.
Right, absolutely. So with that being said, this is in a consent agenda item, and we'll allow our leads to take a chance to make sure that everything is correct from their notes. And Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have a question on the Forty Oaks upgrades, and maybe I misunderstood this in the discussion, because I was reading back through this again, but my understanding was we, the RFP is just for the demolition of the property. We're saying we're going to, I don't think, I may be remembering wrong, but I'm pretty sure the consensus was, we're not necessarily replacing anything. We might put like an educational, like a pavilion or something there. So this is a pretty high price tag for that. Is that, am I missing something here?
We talked about going through a community process of what the community wanted before allocating funds. So we did include their budget for replacing it with a smaller structure, but it's always possible if the community wants just a pavilion instead of an actual building, that it could be a lesser amount, it would save money.
Right. And to your point, Mr. Councilman Perkins, if we need to revisit, we can turn around and readjust the budget.
Right. We can always reduce the money, it's much harder to add.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So with this item, it will not be on consent, and the two will discuss by council meeting. Okay? Great. So we'll move on to item I, which is to discuss a contract with Volker for the public meeting display proposals for Mel Avenue Intersection Safety and Operational Improvement Project SPLAS 09 in an amount not to exceed $17,500 for rendering, or $35,000 for 3D animation to be funded from the SPLAS I. Mr. Kaiser?
About a month ago, city council and mayor asked that we bring back some proposal to address a visualization technique to provide the public with a better understanding of the operational improvements that are planned at Mel Church in these ponds. And so there really are two techniques. One are renderings. Basically, you take a picture and you merge pictures together, and you look at all sides of the intersection. That's what rendering is. A 3D animation is what I'm going to show you here, and the difference is pretty significant in terms of cost, but I wanted to have you see this. If we can, there we go. Of course, it's a little bit staggered because of the internet and capacity of the software program, but basically that's what it provides. It basically will look at all four sides of the intersection, including Mel, and it will also show the synchronization of the signals at the two intersections. And that's just an example of what it would look like. So obviously, that is the optimum, right? That's the best. The concern, I think, and I was addressed, I think it was addressed by the city manager or Lisa, about the capacity of the website, because that takes up a lot of information, a lot of data. And I'm not sure if the city's website can handle that. But the other issue I think I've addressed in the work session, agenda item, is that this is a one-time use. And I don't know where we would present it as an example. If we have a public, well, when we do have a public meeting on this, on the concept work, which we're going to plan to do hopefully sometime this summer, we're going to have to be able to set this up in a public setting with a screen and everything else. And again, it's for that two-hour event, and then it's over with. So it's up to council, but it is what it is. Either you have the renderings or you have the 3D animation.
Right. Thank you. You did what we asked you to do. That's the bottom line. So thank you. Council, what? Counsel, what is your preference in terms of either the rendering or the 3D?
As cool as the 3D is, I think we probably should save money and just do the color postwork.
I'm so glad to hear that. Anyone else? Yes, Councilwoman Hood?
I think the static.
And you're not, your mic's not on?
The static side-by-side comparisons, and perhaps even with a transparent overlay in addition to that, would be easier to, for citizens to understand, because they can look at it and ask questions. It's cheaper also, but I love the idea of the, of the fly-through, but it's just too much, too overwhelming, I think, to citizens. So I would go with the side-by-side.
The rendering. Yes, okay. Councilwoman Bell?
Definitely I'll go with the renderings, but I did have a question for you, Mr. Kaiser, just appropriate, ma'am, in regards to, did you reach out to other vendors, our staff, the vendor that you have listed here with the two amounts? I'm thinking about SCAD or any of, like, any of the students that we have, even at Georgia State, they're working like the IT or graphic design. Because we've done some of this type of stuff in my, in my other work field, and it's cheaper. But I know that this house has the components of the engineer, so I'm just, I'm just curious.
I, I reached out to one other company that's not Associated, obviously, it's not Volker. The firm that they have recommended is, and I've dealt with them many years ago, actually. They are most, by the most premier for doing this nationwide. I did check with one other engineering firm, and they did not return my call. They're too busy. One other item, I think Councilwoman Hood mentioned, remember that little concept picture that you saw? They had blue lines, red lines, and all that was hard to look at. You got to remember, it's going to be blown up to a 24 by 36. And it's going to be a lot clearer, showing where a new right-of-way is proposed, existing right-of-way, all those things.
To, to that point, if we go with the rendering, is there some way that you can have maybe like the clear sheets to kind of go over it, to show what the different, like the red lines, different colors like that? I've seen that kind of that way, too, as an option.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes, Council, Councilman?
So personally, I don't think either of these are necessarily a great use of our money. I think even with the 3D renderings, it's not going to show quite the same level of detail. That my understanding is, we already have a drawing. It maybe just needs to be blown up, or maybe just have some of the technical language pulled out of it, or, you know, it's illustrated or something like that. But, I mean, 17,500 bucks even is still a pretty, pretty significant amount for what I think we're getting from it. You know, as impressive as the animation and everything is. So personally, my recommendation is that we just give you a shot at what we have, maybe making it a little bigger. If we need to go back and just have someone mock that up as just a, just an overhead, that doesn't have any engineering language on it, or any, you know, any jargon, like easements or things like that. It's just like, hey, here's a picture of what it's going to look like from the sky. I'd be more in favor of this, but I don't know if I can support using this money in this way for, for this type of rendering. So, thank you.
I'm grateful for that. Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, I just want to emphasize that what the citizens see has to be very clear at their level of understanding, because technical documents that show elevation and many other placement, you know, all of that is just not a good way to communicate to citizens what there is now and how the changes will be done. So making it as simple as possible, but ensuring that citizens can understand the extent of the changes before and after. And I know that's difficult.
It is. Very difficult when you have this kind of project, in a project that is so confined to a very small area. We'll do our best. We'll do a, a concept, we'll do a, a very simple layout and show it first for council. Be sure you're okay with it before we actually finalize it.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to close my comments on this one by saying that when asked the option between the rendering and 3D, of course, the rendering, but I also agree with Councilmember Perkins' comments in regards to the best use of fiduciary funds. And I think that, you know, the funds would be better used if we just use what we already have and correctly have the engineer to go and explain it, or maybe have multiple ways of doing this public discussion, maybe on-site, maybe at an event. Because the big thing that I'm worried about, and I know most of y'all have, have recognized this, that I'm worried about recruitment, people actually coming to these public meetings where we're spending all these funds to make sure that they understand. I don't want the sign group of people that come to most meetings to go, I want to make sure that, like, everybody in the city understands what we're doing and implications of it, and the impact it's going to have on this community, and not necessarily drawing. Because the other thing I want us all to remember is that everybody learns differently. Some of us learn by visualization, some of us learn by having a conversation, and some of us learn by doing it. And so spending this money, I want to make sure that we're utilizing it or spending the money in the best way to meet our residents where they are, all of them, and not just a select few. So I do think there is definitely a huge outreach component that's necessary for this project.
So here is what we had contemplated a number of months ago. And I haven't laid out the program of how the concept meeting would be held, Councilwoman Bell. But the plan was, at least conceptually in my brain, was to have it on-site in a tent so that I could point out where the improvements are on the ground to those that attended. So I could have a bullhorn, I could speak loud enough, whatever, and hopefully it doesn't rain. But that is the best way. I mean, obviously, we have to have law enforcement there to protect everybody because of the cars and trains and everything else going on out there. But if I can point to where the improvements are occurring and be within a few feet of it and say, there's an extra turn lane here, and there's a signal here, and this is about where the future right-of-way is over here, and I can point to it, and I got a group of 10 or 15 people, because I suspect even, probably me, we're not going to be much more than 10 or 15 people. I mean, it's just not going to happen, most probably. I mean, we'd love to have more, but it's just, it most likely won't happen. And so if I have that kind of group of people, that quantity of people, we can do a lot of good things. If you recall, we did the same thing on Market Street with the sidewalks and the easemounts, and it worked out very well.
Yep, yep. So and to your point, I think for the discussion tonight, from a council perspective, you do not want us to do either the 17,000 or 35,000. Is that safe to say, from a council perspective? I was just saying, you do not want to spend $17,000 or $35,000 that has been presented to us. I just want to make sure we cover what's on the agenda right now. Is that correct, counsel? Yep, okay, all right, thank you. We will follow up in terms of what you said and maybe take some of the examples with the greenway in terms of doing, meeting people where they are. And when we have this plan to make sure upcoming events, that we also have the drawings and everything else that we can take along. So we'll have a road tour of the road, okay? Does that sound good? All right, perfect.
Does this need to be consent, or do we not need to vote?
We'll need to vote on this one, because we're not going to do anything with this, right? Is that, because this was for discussion for us to?
Yeah, okay, that's fine. As long as we don't, or as long as we're not voting, that's fine.
Yep, so we've discussed it.
We're not allocating additional.
We're not allocating the money, so we're good. Okay, great, counsel. So we'll move on to J, which is to discuss a lease agreement with GNI X Industrial Georgia LLC for the lease of approximately 27,510 square feet of office space at the known, property known as 736 Park North for use as a city administrative space for a term of 62 months. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess Attorney Quinn and our tag team on this one. So I'll start off by basically explaining that at the current City Hall and City Hall Annex buildings, we can no longer accommodate, or those buildings, rather, can no longer accommodate our current staff or our growing staff. And we are desperately in need of more office space. And so we have gone out and with the assistance of a commercial real estate broker, we've identified a vacant office building space at 736 Park North. It is within our city limits. For those, our residents here, it's over near 285. And it's 27,000 square feet, and it would be more than enough room for our current City Hall staff, our City Hall Annex staff, and also our police department. So with that said, I will turn it over to Attorney Quinn to talk more about the lease. And if you have any questions, we will answer those at that time. Thank you.
Well, you know, on the, the summary page of the lease, you see the key terms, the length and the rental rate. One of the issues that we've negotiated successfully is reserved parking, both for the administrative staff and visitors in the front, as well as a reserved parking slash vehicle storage area that they've agreed can be fenced in in the rear for our public safety vehicles. You know, the, the premises were most recently used as, I guess, a warehouse or something like that. And so it's not an office at this time. And we have another item on the agenda for a contract to do that work that would need to be done. So the timing and the approval of that is one of the things that we've been negotiating with the landlord's council on. Basically, the legal terms, I think we're very, very close on. The business terms, the, the council is familiar with from our prior executive sessions regarding this real estate. And, you know, I, I think I'll just answer any questions you may have if I can.
Okay, Councilman Carroll?
So I guess I have two questions. One, maybe for Dan, is just financially, is this lease doable for the city? And, you know, the near future, not just this year, but like future years?
In the 2024 budget, back when we did this budget back in October, it was kind of just starting as a pipe dream. So we didn't build in a lot of the other expenses. But I did give the city manager a, a, because we did build some, some expenses and the lease already are in the 2024 budget. And I've done an analysis of our fund balance history for the last 10 years. And over the last three fiscal years, we have had significant increases in our fund balance, where we spent less than the revenue we brought in, accumulating over the last three years to almost $2 million to our fund balance. So if we have to spend some extra money for a build-out, for systems that we need for the new building, we can dip into our reserves. And we built our reserves up over the last three years. In 2022, we had an increase in the fund balance of 523,000. In 2022, we had an increase in our fund balance of $1,046,000. And we're anticipating for 2023 an increase of $368,000.
Any other questions from the council? Councilman Carroll?
I have another question for Stephen. So do you anticipate having, sorry?
Sorry, that was me.
You know, do you anticipate having a final version of the lease in the next couple of days for the council to review before the Tuesday meeting?
Yes, I do. I mean, you know, it's a two-sided thing, so I hesitate to be really firm about it. But I, we had a call with the landlord's attorneys today, and we're really close, so yes.
Yeah, and if we run into a situation where it's not ready, then we'd have to just do a special call meeting as an option to address it. Okay, any other questions from the council? Okay, hearing none. Councilwoman Bell, are you good? I just want to make sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I am good. I do have one question. I was reluctant. But I see here in the write-up, and I guess this question's for Stephen, since you're in the negotiations piece with the, for the contract purposes, but there's a, it says that the business owner has expressed a willingness to allow the installation of the fence and the gate at the back of the building. And I know when we, you know, did the tour around it and walked, did the walkthrough, that was a huge concern. Do you have any concerns in regards to them not allowing us to put that fixing gate back there, as y'all are in discussion?
No, we discussed that specifically, and the attorney said that he understood and, and didn't object. And so I suppose, you know, until it's signed, it's not final, but I, I don't have a concern at this time. I think they understand what we want and why, and they're fine with it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add something on that?
And, and interim City Manager Jones?
Yeah, I did want to make sure we clarified that that installation of the fence would be at the city's expense.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, it says the annual lease payment amount for the proposed new location was approved in our operating budget in the amount of 390,000. What is the actual first-year cost for this space?
Yeah, it was estimated to be the 300, close, the 390,000, or close to that, based upon the square footage amount. It was, I'm sorry.
The budget was based on the preliminary of us hopefully being in there sooner. So it was based on what we estimated to be the first year, the 2024 rent payments. So it may change as we've been negotiating and figure out, you know, they're going to, I think, comp us a month or two of rent or whatever the negotiations are in there.
There's two free months of rent. I believe that it's one the first year and one the second year. The rent has not been negotiated since the initial presentation that was made by our broker to the council. Now, keep in mind that another significant element of expense on this and any triple-net lease is the pass-through expenses that are not known in advance. And so, but they are annualized. In other words, Dan can maybe explain this better, but let's say that the building needs a new roof. They, then the landlord puts that new roof on there. And they don't just send us a bill for 75% of that cost. They have to annuitize that over the useful life of the roof and charge us 75% of, if it's a 20-year roof, one twentieth of that for a given year. My point being that no matter how much work we do, the total cost will always be an estimate.
Okay, thank you. And just to that point, from the power and other things, is that on us to have to pay, or is that included in the bill? In the lease utilities?
I'm, I'm certain that those are on us to pay.
Yes.
Okay, and then do we have an average of what those utilities were for that building?
I remember we've talked about it before, because our, our commercial real estate broker was going to try to see if the previous tenant could provide us what, what their monthly bill was. But we can still try to find that out for you.
Okay.
It could be tricky, of course, to, it could be a bit of an apples and oranges, you know, depending on how they were using it.
Right, but it, it at least gives us an estimate, so that while we're looking at the expense of the monthly utilization of the building, we still have to factor in the utilities and other expenses, like water. Would that be another expense that we have as well? Water, electricity, and then any other internet services that we need to have. Yes, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, since this is?
Um, since this is, uh, saying to approve the lease agreement, that I think, uh, it would be appropriate to put more information in here about the costs. Uh, and the cost could be the annual cost with the notation that that's, does not include utilities or something like that, but if, if I'm a, if I'm a, just a citizen reading this, this isn't enough information for me to understand, and perhaps it's in the lease, but I think it would be appropriate to put it in, in this, um, agenda item also. And it could say approximately or whatever, but there's really nothing in here that, on the face of it, without getting it into the details of the lease, uh, that are quite complicated, that gives the citizens an, an idea of what amount we're talking about.
Okay. And councilwoman Bell?
Well, I don't want to get into the weeds, y'all, um, but I do want to say with the document at hand, and this is in regards to the lease, and the transfer of making sure that we have space and capacity for the staffs to be productive. Uh, as far as the utilities, that is not a huge concern of mine, because the city's been paying, the administrative staff have been paying the utilities before now, and my understanding, based off of the extensive conversation that we've had, is that we're going from one building to the other. So my understanding is whatever utilities that we currently have at a building that they're currently operating in will be cut off or halted, and then we'll just supplement it with the utilities at the other space. That's not a big concern for me. Uh, I do, uh, think that it's necessary after endless conversations in regards to space capacity, that we move forward with just the information that has been presented to us in regards to the lease, so we can go ahead and, um, start the motion on that effort.
Okay, thank you, um, councilwoman Bell. Um, council, so for what we have at hand, this isn't the final lease. We have to wait until you get the final lease between you and, and the owner. So, um, definitely won't be consent, and so we can, um, just make sure that we wait until Tuesday, if that's the pleasure of the, the body, because we have to wait till the final. Okay? You gotta look.
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll be back.
I'm in favor of agreeing.
Yeah, we should have. Do we have four?
We do. One, two, three, four.
Yeah, oh yeah, you're on. Yeah, four. Yes, so we're good.
Well, um...
Does four have to be fiscal, though?
Yeah, it does have to be fiscal.
It does, but, you know, we're not taking any action, so... I don't, did Mr. Carroll just use...
He just stepped away.
Yeah.
He just stepped away.
Since this is the fourth session, we're not voting, I think.
Okay.
Well, wait, and, and we can follow up with him when he comes back in, just for record's sake. Okay, so we'll move to item K, which is to discuss a contract with... Okay, he came back. So you're good with, uh, we're just gonna add this to the regular agenda since we're waiting on that.
We don't have a final version.
Right, okay. Just want to make sure you in the room.
I figured that's what you'd do.
Okay. So, um, we're moving with the contract with Parani, um, construction, a statewide contractor for the redesign and renovations of some areas within the building located at seven thirty-six Park North for use as a city administrative space for a period of six months. Interim city manager Jones?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, in preparation for us moving into the proposed, uh, locations located at seven thirty-six Park North, uh, for use as city administrative space, uh, we are in need of a, uh, general contractor to assist with some, um, internal, uh, redesigns or renovations. Uh, for example, uh, we would need to, uh, remove some of the old carpeting, um, in, uh, areas of the building, um, specifically in our high-traffic areas such as our front entrance. Uh, we also need to do, uh, some, uh, demolitions. Uh, for example, we may need to move some walls or make some counter space, uh, for our, uh, court area of the building, our city hall, uh, receptionist area. Also, we will need to, uh, secure, uh, our property and evidence room at the police department, and also create some other, uh, areas, for example, some walls, some doors, to make sure, uh, that areas are, uh, safe for our staff during the process of them working in that location. Uh, we have, um, referred to the, uh, state of Georgia. Uh, they have a, uh, general contractor list, and Pariani is on that state contract, they're a statewide contractor, under the contract called Gordian. Um, I provided to you a, uh, quote from them. Uh, we'll, I do want to make it clear that the quote that they provided to us was based upon the twenty-seven-thousand-square-foot size of the building, uh, based upon, um, a cost of thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents per square foot. Now, we are not renovating twenty-seven-thousand square foot of the building. It's only gonna be specific areas, and, uh, once we, um, you know, continue to go through this process, uh, they will provide us with the actual price, uh, once we have the design, uh, or redesign areas confirmed, uh, but I assure you, uh, you know, it won't be a million dollars, whatever, seven, thirty-eight seventy-four times twenty-seven-thousand square feet. It will not be that. Uh, it will be substantially lower. Right now, I can only give you a guesstimate, uh, but we are, uh, looking at probably at least, uh, no more than about five-hundred-thousand total, uh, for the work that they will have to do to get, uh, the location ready for our staff and our police department as well.
Okay.
Um, I did go through, uh, sending you an email. Uh, there, uh, this particular company has worked for DeKalb County Schools, Department of Corrections, City of Haightville, City of South Fulton. Uh, they do have a task order contract with the City of Atlanta that's currently pending. Uh, this, today I did reach out to the city manager of Haightville, uh, to find out his experience with this particular statewide contractor. He expressed that he is very pleased with the work that they have done for them, and, uh, he, he does recommend, uh, them for, uh, the work that we anticipate here in our new administrative building that we are proposing to move to. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, when you put that out, did you have any other people who bid it or, or provided a...
So, no, ma'am. So when you go off of the state contract, um, we don't have to do a bid process.
Okay.
Going through a bid process for something like this would take probably ninety to a hundred-and-twenty days, so we're basically piggybacking off of a state contract.
Okay.
And they've kind of already done the vetting of the companies for us.
I, I wanted more so the public to know that process, so that they're aware what, what the process looks and why, and how we're not having to do certain things. Counsel, did you, councilman Carroll?
So I guess I have two questions, and Dan, I just want to confirm this. Five-hundred-thousand was kind of included in the finance when we calculated out the amount?
No.
It's not?
We didn't budget. All we budgeted for...
Speak into the mic, Dan. Thank you.
The only thing that was originally put into the original twenty-twenty-four budget was the, basically the rent and some minor other cost increases. So there's gonna be several things that we're gonna have to head on to that. That's why I brought up the increase in the fund balance for reserves that we may have to go into, to make this whole project happen. Because like I said, when we did the budget back in October, we really had no clue exactly what we needed to do.
Because I mean, it almost seems like it would need to be a budget amendment for this large amount.
Yeah, we do anticipate having to do, but we can do a budget amendment at any time.
Right, right.
I would suggest we do it after the middle of the year. Once we get our tax digest information in around Memorial Day, we'll have the mileage rate hearing, see what our anticipated digest is, what our revenue will be, and we can look at all of our expenditures and everything to date and project out and do a budget amendment at that time.
And is this...
Yes.
Sorry, just someone else?
No, no, I want you to go ahead.
Um, is this work that has to be done before we move in? In other words, we won't be able to move in until this work is completed, or is there a partial move-in while the work is going on?
I would recommend that we try to get all of those type of things done before we move in, specifically, uh, with our police department, with our property and evidence room. We would definitely want to have things like that completed before we move into the building. Um, the recommendation is that we relocate the main front door to, I don't know if you remember, kind of that bigger lobby area, because of the proximity to the public restrooms that we're proposing. Uh, those are the type of things that I think would be necessary before we move in. Now, you know, staff, office areas, we may be able to look at doing that part after we move in, because a lot of these contractors, I'm sure we could negotiate with them to do work after hours, after five P.M. Um, I know I've had that done at other organizations where basically they worked all night long.
The la, the last question I had, is there any credit for the rent for this? Because it seems like we're making pretty substantial improvements to the building.
So, um, if, if, there was a couple of things I wanted to add or clarify, and that was one of them. Um, there is a landlord budget for tenant improvements that is approximately a hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Um, the exact number's in there, but I don't remember it. A hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand. So you would effectively subtract that from the total in order to find out how much we're having to come out of pocket, so to speak. Um, the, the other thing I wanted to say is our discussion here has all been about the build-out, but that's not really what this contract is. This is for the design phase. So the design phase is a hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars to produce professional architectural and engineering plans to do what we want done. Once we get back those plans, if we choose to proceed to the next step of actual construction, that's what the city manager has estimated at five-hundred-thousand, minus one-sixty-five that the landlord would contribute. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. You know, you gotta have the plans before you can build anything, but particularly with this lease and any similar lease, the plans have to be approved by the landlord because it's making changes to their property. So we have to pay for the plans, get the plans, get the landlord to approve the plans, then contract with this vendor or another one to actually do the work.
I get that. I shouldn't, wouldn't want to pay for a hundred thousand unless the council's also willing to pay the additional four-hundred thousand to...
Yeah, of course. I mean, if the council doesn't think it's a good idea to spend the net approximately four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in addition to the rent and the, um, cam, then you wouldn't want to take any of these steps.
Right.
Of course, we have people working in the hallway, so we need to take some of that stuff. I think that I covered what, what I meant to there. Sorry to go on for a little bit.
No, no, that's fine. Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you for that explanation, because I was trying to make the figures match, and I couldn't figure it out. Um, a couple of questions. Number one, recommendation, approve the contract for redesign and renovations. So, but this is for discussion, and we don't have an actual contract in front of us. Is that correct?
We do have the contract.
We do have it.
It came in today.
It was emailed us.
But it hasn't, hasn't been reviewed or, uh, so my question is a procedural one. If, if we vote, uh, next week to approve the contract, then that's the end of it versus us just discussing it here tonight. Is that correct? Because this says redesign and renovations, so this is really redesign, and it, and it isn't the renovation.
Redesign so that...
Okay.
There can be renovations, because, so once the design is done, then this vendor or another one can put an exact price on the renovations. That can't be done until they have the design. So all they've given is a estimate that they created by multiplying a number of times square feet, and that's not accurate, as the city manager explained. But that's not what we're deciding. That's to give you an idea of what they think you're looking at to accomplish what they're gonna design. And I'm sure that we can communicate with them and get them to revise that estimate, but what the council would be asked to commit to next, in addition to the lease itself, would be the hundred-and-seven-thousand to design the necessary improvements. And as Mr. Carroll said, you obviously wouldn't want to spend that if you weren't gonna go ahead with the project. And that's why they give you the estimate, and we think that we can get a more accurate estimate from them.
Okay.
Before next week?
I think so. Tammy, yeah?
I think, yes, we, we are, they understand how serious of a need this is for us, so yes, they are willing to work with us to get that information to us.
Okay. The other questions, um, I noticed that it says creating new public entrance, which will be handicapped accessible, but doesn't the entire space need to be handicapped accessible?
Yes, ma'am, but what that's making reference to is the relocation of the front door. We would have to add a, uh, ADA accessible ramp at that location.
Right, but, but all, doesn't, doesn't the entire space that we're going to be leasing have to comply with ADA?
Yes, and we've had, um, an inspection done by our building official, and he has identified any areas that were not ADA accessible or where improvements needed to be made.
Okay, so that's, that's being covered in the, the design information that we will give to the contractor?
Well, we will, we can share that information from the building official. Our city building official went over to the building.
Okay. And you did say that you're going to have the fire department review and approve the la, the layout before it goes to final?
I, I think that would be safe, yes, for a life-saving reason, yes.
Yeah.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I did notice one thing in the design development phase. It note, uh, it mentions that the phase is to exclude concepts for restroom renovation, and if my memory serves me well, I think that was one of the things we discussed in our walkthrough, is something that needed to happen. Has that changed, or was that an oversight on their part?
Um, no, the restrooms will remain as they are. Uh, we didn't feel like there needed to be any improvements to it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions from the council? Okay, so this, along with the, um, the other item, we still have to get the final numbers before, and we're anticipating that will be done by next Tuesday, and if not, we'd have to do a special call meeting to address that as well. Okay? Anyone sign up for this item? All right, thank you. So we have, mm-hmm, this one here. Item L, which is to discuss a contract with Southern Computer Warehouse Incorporated, S C W Inc., a statewide contractor, to provide a security system for the new proposed city administrative space located at seven thirty-six Park North for a term of six months in the amount not to exceed a hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand. City manager?
Yes, Mayor. Like all of our current city buildings, we're going to need to have a security system in our proposed new location. Uh, this particular contractor, uh, Southern Computer Warehouse, again, is also a state contractor, a statewide contractor, um, uh, which means that, you know, having an approved statewide contractor means that we will not have to go through the solicitation process, um, and that alone saves us between ninety to a hundred-and-twenty days of time of having to, uh, not having to do an RFP process, because it's been done for us already through the state of Georgia. Um, we, uh, actually, our police chief and our public works director, um, are very much familiar with this particular company, and, uh, therefore, they have provided to us a quote, um, in an amount not to exceed a hundred... to exceed $126,000 for, to provide a security system. And what I mean by that is cameras, that would be door fobs, access controls, as late, Mayor, my mind is...
That's okay, we're almost there, we're almost there.
But I think that's, that's the gist of it, and this would be for a term of six months.
So can I ask a question about that funding for it? Would any of this, could any of this be covered on the SPOLOST? Since it's security, and part of it is, I'm just asking, because we have a section with capital and...
Yeah, but I'm not sure if that would need to be a city-owned building. But Dan, can you help me out with this one?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It has to be capital construction and...
Yes, I don't think it's a capital expense.
It's a leasehold improvement and, well, and, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because...
Not ARPA, you can...
Not ARPA?
No, and we've already allocated all of our ARPA money.
Okay. Okay, I just tried, I wanted, you know.
It isn't hard to try.
Well, you know, the same, as we've said a number of times, there's always the chance to move something from general fund that is eligible for SPOLOST, for example, and free up those funds for this.
Mm-hmm, okay. Question, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, does this contract include maintenance of the system?
Yes.
Okay. And is there, that an annual fee?
It's not an annual fee, is it?
There's no annual fee. What you see is all-inclusive, there's a 10-year warranty, updates...
Speaking to the mic, Ms. Dixon.
Ms. Dixon, let people know.
She's coming to my rescue. Thank you.
So Southern Computer Warehouse is the actual company that has the contract with the state, and then Verkata is the system itself. There's a 10-year warranty on it, there are automatic updates. The cost you see is the cost that we are going to incur, period, and so there's no additional cost for updates. If something, if a camera breaks, Verkata will replace it free of charge, and all of that will be written into the actual contract.
Okay, and Councilman Carroll?
But, excuse me, let me just finish. But from the standpoint of if the system breaks, they'll come and evaluate what the problem is?
Yes, they will evaluate what the problem is and fix it.
Okay, so there's no need for a maintenance contract?
It's all-inclusive. The maintenance is a part of the contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilman Carroll?
The one question I had is that the summary is for a term of six months. Now, are they providing monitoring services, or they're just installing it? What is that, six months?
So on average, when you do these type contracts, that's the term of time for install. You give more time than what's actually needed. Realistically, it's going to take them 60 days to 90 days once we say okay, but six months gives them that time if they need to do something additional.
Okay, and there's not monitoring as part of this deal, right? We have to either set that up or...
So let me verify that. Let me, let me verify, but I'm almost certain that monitoring is a part of it.
Okay, and then that would be as long as the system's in place?
It's not a part of the Verkata system.
No, it's similar to the cameras that we have...
Speaking to the mic, Chief.
Come, come on up, everybody has, talking to the mic now.
Sorry, sorry for asking all these questions late.
No, that's fine, we need to ask the questions.
It's similar to the cameras that we have in this building here and the cameras that are at city hall annex and the, how we, the access to get in and out of these doors. So this is, these systems aren't monitored by an alarm company.
Any other questions that we have, two standing up there? Yes, Councilman Perkins?
Do we have like a RFP response or like a statement of work, like final contract we can review before Tuesday, or...
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Do we have more, like the actual contract that we can look at before Tuesday?
So we do have, we have the actual quote that they submitted, and I need to talk to Attorney Quinn about which actual contract will be used.
Okay.
But the answer is yes, you'll most definitely have it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to see the details before.
Okay, yeah, so I know this won't be on consent either, so it's...
You have a contract, so you can't...
Right, we can't do anything, so it's for discussion. Council, did you have any other questions for this? Councilwoman Bell, just want to make sure I got you covered?
Nope, nope. No questions, I have to wait on the contract.
Okay, thank you. And do we have anyone signed up for this one? Okay, with that being said, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion?
You have a motion, let's hear that motion.
I have a motion, we adjourn.
You move?
I'm moving.
Okay, all right. It's been properly moved and seconded, that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all, and we'll see you next week.